Good evening. Calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, June 23, 2025. I am Select Board Chair Diane Mahan. I would like to start to my right.
John Hurd.
Eric Helman.
Hunter Diggins.
James Veeney, Town Manager.
Michael Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashley Mark, Board Administrator.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, consistent with provisions in state law for remote participation in public meetings. Before we begin, please note the following. This meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do this on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website. Specifically, click on Select Board Agendas and Minutes page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more participants and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable period of time fail, the in-person meeting will continue at the discretion of the chair, provided that a quorum of the board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in their confirmation email for a backup audio connection to the meeting. There will be the following opportunities for public comment at tonight's meeting. We have Citizens Open Forum, and we have Agenda Item 12 on the consent agenda that we will be taking out of the consent agenda and discussing separately. If you are attending by Zoom and want to participate, please raise your hand when I announce that public comment is open. If you're here in the chambers, please raise your hand here. If you do not know how to raise your hand in Zoom, now would be an excellent time to Google on how to do so. And let's see how much of the business we can get done tonight. First, we have a discussion and potential vote, DEP consent order, related to the private info sources to the town sewer system, an issue since, I believe, 2010 that our DPW Director, Mr. Rodamacher, previous Town Manager, current Town Manager, and current Town Council, Mr. Cunningham, have been intimately involved with. And I would, I believe, start with Town Council? Or Mr. Rodamacher?
I think Mr. Rodamacher, Madam Chair. Oh, oh. I can go, I guess, Madam Chair for this. As Madam Chair mentioned, this relates to a matter that goes back to 2010, when the State Department of Environmental Protection conducted an investigation in Arlington regarding potential illicit sewer outflows, particularly sump pumps that were existing at that time. They did an inspection, located a couple that had not been previously reported because of that, which is a violation of state law. The town of Arlington at that time entered into a consent order with the state DEP to come up with a plan to try and remedy the situation. That plan has been ongoing. It's been extensive. The requirements that the DEP put upon the town pursuant to that consent order were extensive, including trying to eliminate the possibility that all properties in town had any illicit connection to the town sewer system. Obviously, the connections, illicit connections to the town sewer can be problematic for a number of reasons. It can create flow problems for the town sewer system. It can introduce water that shouldn't necessarily be in the town's sewer system. So those are the concerns the DEP raised in the consent order. The Department of Public Works has undertaken significant efforts since 2010 to reach compliance with the consent order originally entered in 2010. Compliance is near complete. At this point, I think Mr. Rodamacher can outline, but approximately 95% of the properties have either been cleared as non-contributors to the sewer system issue, or have been inspected and remedied. The remaining 5% have been problematic in terms of gaining access to the properties in particular. There's been an outside consultant retained by the town, Weston and Sampson, who've been assisting in this process. Some of these remaining properties have been contacted numerous, on numerous occasions, and Mr. Rodamacher can better outline those efforts, because it's really been undertaken by the Department of Public Works with Mr. Rodamacher and his staff. Those properties have been visited on a number of occasions. They just simply cannot seem to get compliance. At this stage, the town is under pressure from the Department of Environmental Protection to reach full compliance. There are fine provisions contained in the consent order. The town could be subject to those fines if it doesn't reach full compliance. I don't think that's necessarily the direction the state wants to go, but those do exist, and I think the board should be aware of that. At this point, I think we're here to give the board an update, to answer questions it may have regarding the history of this issue, the efforts undertaken to date, things that we could do to try and remedy it. Specific recommendations that I would suggest at this stage would be, you know, kind of a last and final effort to reach these residents. We prefer not to take dramatic steps, but at some point, I think that our choices are limited. One step that I think we recommend, and this could be communicated via certified mail, perhaps a visit to the residents as well, leaving door knockers. Some of those efforts have already been undertaken, but suggesting perhaps one more time. And notifying them that we would potentially be seeking administrative search warrants to get into these properties, to look at the, what they've got, if they've got any illicit connections. If they don't, great, it's cleared, we can check it off. If they do, come up with a plan for that resident to make sure that that illicit connection no longer exists. For that particular action item, it's my opinion that the town, specifically the Town Manager, and the Director of Public Works do not necessarily need the Select Board's approval for that. I think it's a good idea to involve the Select Board in decisions that are as important as that. It would necessitate, if a resident didn't respond to a letter, and the seeking of an administrative search warrant was required, that would, the legal department would have to pursue that likely in Cambridge District Court. It's not a guarantee that the court would allow that, but that's the course we'd have to take. It would be a decent undertaking, depending on the number of properties involved. Right now, the scale of the problem, I estimate it, based on numbers that we have, is about 611 properties in town that we've been unable to access to either clear or investigate whether illicit connection exists. So hopefully, that wouldn't be the number that we'd have to be seeking warrants for, because that would be problematic. The second option, to try and encourage cooperation with this process, which is, again, required from the town, would be to consider the possibility of assessing a sewer, you know, a sewer fee. I think that if there are illicit connections, there's certainly a cost associated with that that's not being captured by current water bills, and Mr. Rodamacher can outline that further. The amount of that, or whether the board's interested in that, is obviously a matter for the board's consideration. In my opinion, that would require the board's approval. As you know, the board is the town's Water Commissioner pursuant to the Town Manager Act, pursuant to state law. So there, in my opinion, that type of fee, which could be assessed on a quarterly basis, could not be assessed without this board's approval, in my opinion. Those are two of the things, and there are other things that the board may think of in terms of trying to gain compliance. I think that, at this point, the Director of Public Works is open to suggestions if there are other things that the board might have in mind or want to suggest, but I think the most important thing we want to try and do is reach full compliance. The DEP, as I mentioned, is putting pressure on us at this time, and those are a couple of suggestions we have, and I think Mr. Rodamacher can fill in any holes regarding our efforts that he certainly knows more about that we've undertaken the last 15 years.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Cunningham did a great job explaining how we got to where we are. There are about 500 homes that we just have not been able to access, and that stems also from the water meter replacement project. These are the same homes we need to get into to replace water meters, because we combined the two efforts. We went into everyone's home to do their meter, and then checked for these connections to combine the two efforts, so that we were left with 500. And then during that process, where we did look into the other 95% of the homes, we found evidence of some kind of connection, and so our consultant went back to revisit those homes, and some got the access and others did not, and that's where you get the 600 plus or minus, the 500 plus another hundred that we were not able to re-access to do further testing.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I know there was some question about whether there was a particular area of town where this might be a particular issue, and according to our review of the materials, it seems like it's not centered in any particular area of town or group of precincts, as this seems to be spread fairly evenly throughout town.
And I would add to the effort to access these 500 plus or minus homes has not been insignificant. There have been at least four or five mailings and door hangers requesting a call back or an appointment. Now, it's been some years since that, so I agree that it's probably the wise first step to try to reach back out again, either with some kind of certified mailing or another door hanger asking for access. Time has passed, people's attentions might be a little bit more willing to respond. So I agree, we probably can try our more typical approach, and then maybe get a little bit more aggressive.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, one last thing. If that's the route that is chosen, we, I would not even recommend that the threat of possible assessment of a sewer fee be included in that letter without the board's approval. So that's why this time is an appropriate time for the board to weigh in, because if we're going to send out a letter, I think it would certainly be advantageous in terms of trying to gain compliance to at least make people aware that that's a possibility, not assess it at this time, but, you know, but I certainly don't think it would be appropriate to even suggest that possibility without the board's approval of it.
Okay. And just for, for my colleagues, sort of more background knowledge, if we were to take a vote like that, I would want a full board present for any such vote like that. I had discussed with Town Council, and please correct me on anything I say incorrectly, about not putting this on for tonight, and to put it on for July, but it was my understanding that in conversations with DEP, it was sort of represented to them that the town is going to be taking some sort of a step, and having this as an agenda item in a preliminary discussion tonight would sort of satisfy that representation, not by us, but by others who have been dealing with the DEP on something from, I understand, it's from 2010 consent decree. And I understand when people say, oh, you can't compare apples to oranges, but I think you can, especially in light of residents and future overrides. I can tell you, I would not be in favor next month of, or even tonight, putting any language in there that myself individually would assess a fee on a maybe on a house, that because we haven't been able to go in and verify whether there is or is not a hookup that should or should not be there. That's not something I would want to do, but I certainly don't want to do it without a full board, so. And I'm not hearing that you're asking for that tonight, if that would be an option, but I believe for it to be included in a letter, the board would have to vote that. So if perchance that vote should come up tonight, that would be something that I'm not voting for, and again, just at the very least, there should be a full board for a vote like that, in my personal opinion. Again, we're doing this to satisfy representations that the Town Council and others have had with DEP, to show that we're going back at it again. And the other thing that really, you know, sticks in my bonnet, and I've been told, oh, you can't compare the two, but yeah, I think you can. Yes, we have this 2010 consent decree, but we also have the 1992 court order under the Clean Water Act that, you know, some people call it Alway Brook, people that live near it call it Schitt's Creek. You know that TV show? Because, you know, for me to talk about 500 to 600 town residents that may be pumping rainwater, in large part probably because of projects that the town of Arlington, and I know I represent, and/or the MWRA or other construction projects have created, and we're going gangbusters, and I'm not going to vote to put any kind of fee on anyone's water bill on clean water, when you're not taking care of, you know, the feces, the condoms, the dirty toilet paper, the tampons, the women's feminine products that are in Alway Brook, that, you know, my thing would be, and I would ask the Town Manager and Town Council, Mr. Rodamacher, and going forward, dealing with DEP, if the board so chose tonight or when there are all five of us, to say, we'll continue on doing efforts in terms of trying to reach these 611 people on a maybe, and we'll show you what we're doing, but we want you to enforce that you've looked the other way. This is a serious public health hazard. I'm more concerned about gaga water, as they say in my family, than rainwater. And if they're going to say, oh, this is a 2010 consent decree that I didn't vote for, and I didn't know about until years later, Mr. Sullivan did it, but that's a whole nother thing, then, you know, I would like, I know it hasn't been brought up at meetings, I would like if it can be, even if they say it's not germane, I think it is. I think if they're coming in, DEP, and coming in hot on us for 611 residents, the same residents we could be going to for an override because of a flooding of rainwater, not gaga water, rainwater, in large part not of their doing, then let's get serious about the sewage issue. But I just want to make it clear to my colleagues, yes, there is the 2010 consent decree. It was between the Town Manager, I certainly didn't know or vote about it, but there is the 1992. I'm not in favor, number one, just because we don't have a full board. If we do even put in a letter, because we would have to put, you know, failure to respond to this and let us into your house, we're going to get a warrant, the town can do that on their own, but even to even threaten to say, or it could result in a fee, we would have to vote that, which, if people wanted to make that part of a motion tonight, I'll vote no, but I'll leave it to my colleagues. And I apologize, I usually try not to go first, but this issue really sticks it to me. But, Mr. Hurd.
Well, saying first for the court stenographer, it's S-C-H-I-D-T. T. Okay. So just to be clear what we're being asked here, so you're looking for guidance specifically on what to do right now for compliance, like a specific action? Because we went through a few things, and you want the board to discuss this and give you one specific way to address it?
Madam Chair, I think that's right, Mr. Hurd. I think that, you know, the option of administrative warrants, like the Chair mentioned, is something that the town can put in the letter right now without the board's approval. The additional step regarding the fee would require the board's approval.
And the last time it went out was a couple years ago?
Yeah, that's fair, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think some sort of concerted program to reach out to them and remind them of the, how they go about getting their meters. So would this, first up, is it to remind them to replace their meters?
Yes.
And then, so it's not so much about the sewer connection, they reach out to replace their meters, and that's how we achieve this?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I think the first, some people might live in these houses, and they might have lived there for a year and a half, and be a little bit, you know, miffed if we sent them a letter threatening legal action. I think, you know, successively, maybe, you know, we send, you know, whether it's a certified letter, I mean, I think door, I think door hangers are actually good, because it's, you know, an orange hanger as you're walking in the door that you see. Sometime, I mean, I know me, it's like I know when to pay my water bill and my, you know, the taxes get paid by the mortgage, so that just kind of, you know, when I see something from the town of Arlington, I don't rush to open it up. So it could be something that's, oh, it's my tax bill, I don't have to deal with that. So I mean, I do like the idea of the door knockers, and then, you know, if six months pass and there's still non-compliance, then, because I think when you're going to come with like some sort of like threatened legal action or fee, it's good to have, you know, some sort of shortened period of notice from when you actually told them, hey, this is what you got to do. So I mean, I think that, from where I said, it would be, you know, some sort of effort, whether it's both letters, door knockers, whatever was in the budget to do, is to, you know, go out, notify them just clearly, this is how you do it, easy number to call, someone answers, set up the appointment. I think that would be the first step for me, and then, you know, I'm not against some sort of forced compliance if some of the town needs to do to avoid, you know, some sort of penalty on the back end, notwithstanding issues that we've had, but I think the first step is just some sort of concerted effort to reach these people and let them know that they're out of compliance.
Mr. Helman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for, through you, Madam Chair, I think to the Public Works Director, is, am I correct in my understanding that one of the chief concerns of these illegal hookups is contribution to the sewer overflow problems that we can have during heavy storms? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. The, correct. The intent or the issue is any additional flow into our sewers can cause them to exceed their capacity. So they weren't originally designed to carry rainwater or stormwater or infiltration. And so this program that we've been going through with the DEP for many years included televising all the sewer lines and repairing cracks to keep groundwater from getting in, smoke testing to make sure folks' gutters aren't tied in, and this is one of the last components to try to reduce any clean water that's getting into the sewers that can reduce their capacity during a storm.
Got it. So, yeah, I think I largely agree with my colleagues that, I think at this time, threatening a fee particularly is probably premature. I would be really interested in whatever outreach efforts that you make, and I would encourage those, that you track the responses carefully, and, you know, if it's possible to match up, and this is some work, but how, like Mr. Hurd said, you know, somebody who's been there 10 years and got the previous request versus someone who's just been a year, there's a difference there. That said, it's still been, you know, it's still been a few years. So whether that's by certified mail or other methods, I think it obviously leaves to you, but I think if we can track that so that, hopefully, we'll achieve some voluntary compliance, because that's the goal, but then we have a remainder, and there always will be a remainder, of course. I think that no matter what you do, you're going to be back before, so what do we do with, we've done everything we can, what do you want us to do with, you know, with these? At that point, I would certainly not be opposed to thinking about a fee if it comes to that, but I'd want the information on what, on where we're at, how close we are to compliance. One suggestion I would make, since you're just getting a board discussion here and not a vote, is, and there may be a way to frame a letter that's friendly, that makes it very clear that there's lots of options available to a homeowner before the town would contemplate anything, any legal action, but that adds that legal action is a possibility down the road, you know, that could be done in a, in a non-threatening way, literally, that we're not threatening this now, but that is, you know, the town's options, why don't we save ourselves all of this? You know, you could consider that, I think that's, that's up to ultimately the Town Manager. But I think, yeah, I think the tone should be careful, just because it's been a couple of years, but I certainly encourage an effort to reach all these people. And I have the same frustrations with, with the state as my colleagues do, but I also am aware that we're all, we all have a corporate responsibility to manage the sewer overflow problem, and that those of us who are in compliance, you know, are doing our part. And so I think it is important that the town work with the people firmly, who are not, to make sure that they're aware of, you know, make, assume that they're not aware, right? And assume good faith, but that, you know, even if the state's not doing everything we want the state to do on the CSO issue, that we still have responsibility as a community to do what we can individually with hookups. So that's kind of how I look at it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Helman. Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some questions, probably to Mr. Rodamacher, but also maybe to Mr. Cunningham. So what's the deadline? When do we have to be in compliance?
Madam Chair, technically, we're beyond the deadline at this point, we have been for some number of years. I mean, it's just really a matter of if the DEP wants to assess fines.
Assess fines? Do we have a sense of what those fines would be?
Yes. I think I...
2895.
Mr. Diggins, the consent order included penalty provisions in the form of a civil administrative penalty in the amount of $26,875 that was paid at the time. Possible future penalties for non-compliance in the amount of $250 per day for days 1 through 15 of any cited violation, with escalating amounts of $500 per day in days 16 through 30, and $1,000 per day for days 31 and thereafter, for any violations that remain unaddressed.
Thanks. I think that was in your memo, huh? Okay, those were some of them, it's come back to mind, thank you. So, so you said that a warrant wouldn't necessarily be granted. Why, why wouldn't they grant a warrant under?
Mr. Diggins, I think that the courts have great respect for property owners' Fourth Amendment rights. I think, to Mr. Hurd's point, I think that door knockers are an effective way of demonstrating multiple efforts. I think courts like to see that you haven't just tried a certified letter one time and then now come into the court for administrative warrant. I just think there's a general respect for property owners and their rights to not have people come into their home. We'd have to make the case that this is a particular governmental interest, we're being compelled to do it by another, by a state agency. So that's, that's the reason why I'm hesitant to say that that's going to be a guarantee of success if we go to court to try and seek that type of order, it's not a guarantee. I think there's a good case to be made for it, although I just want to take the time to answer, I think I very much appreciate the Chair's frustration regarding the CSO issue, which I think that we've talked about, I mean, the federal level, and this board has worked extensively on, and the scale of the problem associated with those outflows into this community as opposed to illicit connections from residential properties is vast. And I think that that's not lost on this office or the Department of Public Works. I think that the burden that residents have had to bear on that issue is noted and not insignificant.
Got it, but we, but we have a situation, which is what it is, so we deal with that. But what I'm trying to understand, though, is, so you're, I understand the reluctance of the courts to grant a warrant, but if we provide a checklist for what we've done, I would imagine the court would say, I mean, these are what we expect you to do before you grant you the warrant. If we do all those things, then we should get the warrant, right?
We'd have a good chance, I just think that it'd be, I'm hesitant to provide assurance of a guaranteed result, because it is a protected area.
Got you, got you, I understand. You know, I'm just trying to understand the probabilities, so I got, got a sense of that. So, Mr. Rodamacher, you mentioned that the people that you haven't reached are people that you also haven't reached for doing the meter replacement, right?
Correct.
And so what are the consequences of not doing those meter replacements?
The majority, or all of those homes are getting estimated bills right now.
Okay. And, and so the financial risk, I mean, is probably average, that's out to zero for us? Somebody being overcharged, somebody being undercharged?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, it's not like we're net negative, we're probably net zero. I'm just understanding, because if we're net negative, then that gives us incentive to do something faster. If it's net zero, you know, then, then there's less incentive.
I don't, sorry to interrupt, it does prohibit us from eliminating an older legacy water software, and so we do, are keeping something on life support to try to accommodate these few homes as well, so, but we'll be phasing that out one way or the other anyways. We're just going to lose data for those particular homes.
I got you. And so in the process of trying to reach out, have you called them? Have we, can we call them?
We don't necessarily have a phone number for all of these.
But you have some, I mean, so would calling them be an option?
If we have phone numbers, sure.
Yeah, because that could be a way to reach me too, me, and sort of like letters. Me, I'm thinking about my experience with, me, the gas meter replacement, and they want to come to my place in the middle of the day, and it's like, oh, let's try and coordinate this. You call them once, you know, get them, and so I, I can relate to people who don't respond, you know, and so, but a call is different, I mean, if they give me a time to call them, then, then, then usually I'm a little more responsive. But the whole point is that you want to try a variety of ways, and maybe the courts would say, you know, I mean, did you call them? And we'd have to say that we either tried, or we had good reasons for not trying, you know? Well, you know, I see no reason not to agree with everything that's been said in terms of how to move forward. I mean, thanks for answering questions, I mean, it gives me some guidance as to what to do, I mean, if we decide that we want to do more at next meeting. That's it, thank you.
And now, last two or three questions, I hope, for me. If DEP were to decide to institute fines, that's something that would have to go through the court system? Or no?
No.
No. Where 500 we haven't been able to reach, how many have we? Where 500 we haven't been able to reach, how many have we gained access, changed the water meter, seen that there isn't any hookups that shouldn't be there, or seen that there are and they've been fixed? Approximately how many of those have been accomplished on the other end?
Aside from the 500?
Correct.
Oh, greater than 10,000?
10,000.
Greater than, yeah.
So here's my point. There's no way we're going to get 100% on anything. It'd be great if we did, but we're not. So there's at some point, I know, you know, I think, you know, going forward, doing this action, we'll probably whittle that 500 number down to maybe four, three, whatever. We're not going to get perfection, 100% in this or any issue regarding municipal efforts. So I think at some point that kind of falls flat in the face of D E P. I think we need, as moving forward, we need some guidance on. The town should have a pretty good position. I mean, if we get it down, say we've got a town to 221 or 250, out of 10,000 or 11,000 that we were successful, for them to go and pursue fining us, I mean, at first I'd be interested. Have they done that in any other municipality for such a low number? There's got to be at some point that they can't just doing this sort of, well, it's not David Lee's, but whatever. So as Mr. Hurd and my colleagues have suggested, let's go forward on, you know, either door knockers or certified mail. But if and when this comes up again before the board, it will be before a full board. And I'd like that information because at some point, I'm, not to say to call their bluff, but, I mean, come on, you know, close to 11,000 and we're down to 500 and we'll probably be down to 2, 3, 400. Mr. Attorney Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And there is some argument for that. Obviously, it's a position that D P would have to agree to. But at some point, substantial compliance has been reached, in my opinion, from a legal perspective. And I think that the chair and other board members have correctly pointed out that getting 100% compliance every single residence may not be a reasonable result. And I think that the argument could be made that once you get to a certain, some number lower than 611 or approximately that number, the town has satisfied its obligations under the consent order. That's an argument we'd have to make with D E P and they get to, they get to weigh in on that.
And if you can make my C S O concerns. Because I haven't heard it's actually been discussed at the meeting. I think it's in the back of everybody's mind that it's an interesting dichotomy. But I think moving forward, whenever Town Council, D P W Director, Town Manager, whoever, if there are any future meetings, should throw into, number one, we're close to perfect. You know, 10,000 plus and we're only 500. So come on, guys. But I think we should also say we want the same vigilance out of D E P for, you know, the rainwater that if all these 500 homes were doing that, what they're discharging into isn't going into the homes of residents in Cambridge, Somerville, and Belmont. It's going back into our system and I guess out to Deer Island. So it's not doing what theirs is doing. So anyways, but I appreciate my colleagues taking the time on that and allowing me to go off on it. Mr. Hurd?
Just one question. An illicit connection, sounds tantalizing. Is, is that just like a unpermanent bathroom? Like, it's not like a separate connection to the sewer system, right?
It's a connection of a sump pump to the sewer system, which is prohibited.
So it's not, so if they're going through the house and they see there's a bathroom here and they're like, oh, this is a one-bed bathroom house, they're not looking for that?
No, it's, a lot of times you'll have your sump pump into like a slop sink in the basement or some other way for that water to get into the sewer and that would be considered a connection.
Thank you. All right. We satisfied for you for?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Helman, did you ever hand up again? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will go to Agenda Item Three, a progress report on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I'd like to turn to our liaison, Mr. Helman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, yeah, please, please, Ms. Kelleher. As the select board's designee to, as, for its appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, it's my pleasure to introduce the Chair, Ms. Karen Kelleher, who will present to the board some slides that she spent several hours preparing and didn't get to present at Town Meeting because of technical difficulties, which I'm sure the Town Manager and his team are working on, among other technical difficulties in Town Meeting. Sorry for that editorial. But in addition to that, I know that she particularly and Sarah Suarez in the Planning Department and other members of the board worked very hard on this annual report. And the Chair was very kind to invite Ms. Kelleher back tonight to apprise the board of the trust fund's progress over the last year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Helman, and thank you for all of your time and support. You played your own part in producing both the results and the report itself. As you all know, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was created by Town Meeting and we put together a five-year plan a few years ago, two years ago. You guys approved it and we've been implementing it for two years. So the purpose of the report is to tell you how we're doing. I do have these slides. I'm going to actually skip to the good part, if you don't mind. Sometimes the slides actually make you go slower, so I don't want that to happen. So I won't pause too long on this one of why we need additional affordable housing. But it's easy to forget that a quarter of our neighbors do not have the affordable housing that they need. They're cost burdened, they don't have deed restricted housing that makes housing affordable to them. But let's keep going. This chart is a one-page diagram that reminds us at every trust fund meeting what our action plan says we're going to do. We have three strategies. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but there are three strategies. Each of them has a single goal we're trying to accomplish in the five years. The strategies are preserving and modernizing our existing housing, creating more, more affordable housing, and sustaining the, creating a strong financial platform for the trust so that we can make a long-term sustained commitment to ensuring affordable housing in our community.
Can I just say, please don't skip over anything?
Okay.
Because we weren't able to get this information at Town Meeting.
Okay, great.
And believe it or not, a lot of people really do watch this, or if they haven't watched it, if they heard or see that we discussed it, they'll come back. So please give us also the next step information, if that's okay with you.
Of course, absolutely. I'm here at your disposal, just don't want to abuse the privilege of your time.
Great, thanks.
So just this diagram is my, one of my favorite little diagrams because we can look at all of the actions that we committed to take and that were part of the plan that was developed with the residents and was approved by you as well as the redevelopment board. The next slide is not related to one of those specific goals, but one of the principles. There are a number of guiding principles, and one of them is about building on the capacity we already have in town as well as collaborating across stakeholders. And so I think this slide is a mixed metaphor because it's got the sports metaphor, but it's really about gears that are starting to work together. And I think some of my fellow trust members really feel that if we have a single greatest accomplishment, it may be that we are convening these stakeholders around a townwide strategy and it's starting to really kind of hit its stride. That includes all of you, obviously. You are our oversight body, you appoint all of our members. It includes the Town Manager, who's been a critical element of achieving what's been achieved over the last two years. It includes, it includes the Town Council more than we wanted him to perhaps. No offense, but we've loved your support. We've needed it more than we wanted. And it includes the Z B A. It includes, of course, the Housing Corporation of Arlington, the Housing Authority, who are our primary owners of affordable housing in town, as well as our developers. We also need the C P A Committee. They have been our primary funder and they have funded affordable housing since their inception, of course, as required. But also they're an important supporter. I want to make sure I don't want to miss anyone, so I got to put these on. The D P C D, my gosh, without Sarah Suarez, we would be nowhere. She is amazing. And Town Meeting, of course, is a critical element. And we reported to them, as you know, a few months ago. The developers and realtors are on this page as well, and they are also important. And you're going to hear about a program we deployed with the Town Manager that really sought to attract our realtors and our local developers into the process of creating affordable housing. We did some things that weren't really typical and it was kind of cool. So we're all working together. Two key accomplishments that hopefully you will not forget, if we could go to the next slide, please, are, one, we have increased the pace of affordable housing production in town. Prior to the action plan, we measured the average amount of new units per year was six units. That was over a number, a couple of decades, right? In the last two years, that number is 35 new units. So sustaining that will mean a continued challenge, but that is a really great accomplishment. It is not the trust's accomplishment, it's the accomplishment of all of those actors. We also have achieved an extraordinarily high leverage ratio. For every $1 of town resources that have gone into creating affordable housing in the projects we're going to report on tonight, $72 of other people's money is going into those. That is extraordinarily high. We won't be able to sustain that high a number forever. But we can show you what is the highest sort of sustainable amount of leverage under the current state and federal funding models because H C A is doing it. And we're going to hope to continue to duplicate that model. So those are the big pictures. We are also complying with all of our guidelines. We are meeting our affordability levels. We had set goals that certain amounts of units would be at certain low income levels. We are far exceeding all of those. The vast majority of units are available at, to what people call capital A, affordable housing. There was always, there's a lot of controversy about the fact that we have the ability to go up to 100% of area median income. We've barely, I don't believe we've done that at all. If we have, it's to preserve somebody's tendency. But there is a need for that workforce housing and we've heard a lot about it from the public. But we're mostly focusing on the extremely low income and low income people. Next slide. What resources did we receive? These are the local and federal funding resources that we either received or worked with the Town Manager to deploy. We have only received in total local funds of $790,000. Well, and 90, $790,090. That is $170,000 of unrestricted local funds we received when we were formed plus two C P A awards of $250,000 and $370,000. That amount, $790,000, is barely enough to buy a home in this community, a single home. We also had the opportunity to deploy with the Town Manager $2.81 million of federal funding. That's the federal ARPA money that won't be coming back around. And this is part of why you're getting that tremendous leverage ratio because we used a lot of that and only a little bit of local dollars in those projects. But we've gotten tremendous leverage from it and did some really interesting things. We focused primarily in our first two years on new affordable housing, and there are two reasons for that. One is that ARPA money, which had a clock on it. And we knew it was going to need to get spent and it wasn't going to be, it was focused on new housing creation, new affordable housing creation. The second was that creating new affordable housing through development takes years. It takes two, three, four years to get to construction start. And so we knew in a five-year plan, you have to start that in the first year or two. So we focused on creating additional affordable housing in the first two years. So when you get to the part of the report where it shows you how we've done against every single action in the plan, you'll see a lot of focus on creation and not much on preservation or on building the financial strength of the trust. We are now turning to both of those and we haven't missed any preservation opportunities. We haven't lost any units during that time. So I want to tell you about the projects because that's where it gets most interesting, right? Sunnyside Lane is on the next slide. And I should probably mention that we have since Town Meeting voted to approve the C P A Committee's recommendation to award us an additional $545,000 this year. So we do, we are not down to $29,000 anymore. We were at the time we issued this report, but we do have some additional funds. Ten Sunnyside Lane, this is the model that essentially is attracting the maximum amount of state and federal resources. There are state and federal resources that are allocated every year by the Executive Office of Livable, oh, gosh, they changed it. Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And they have been awarding, you know, dozens of deals every year, but we're not often in that pipeline. H C A is changing that and we hope to continue to change it more. But this is a project like Capital Square, like the Downing Square Broadway Initiative that is using low-income housing tax credits and other state resources to get maximum leverage for the town's dollars. We put $450,000 into this 43-unit rental housing project. This will be, it's on Sunnyside Lane, right off of Broadway in East Arlington. It will be 100% affordable and it is expected to start construction this summer. It is right now seeking its final funding gap-filling awards from the state. In order to receive that, the state asked that the town put more money into the project. So we made an additional award of $200,000 just before Town Meeting to be able to provide that to H C A so they could go to the state and get the additional funding that they needed to fill their gap and move forward with construction. So it's a good example of how having a housing trust that has some capital reserved gives us the ability to act with agility, to seize opportunities and help our projects move forward. This is also passive house, net zero design. The funding sources that we're using here really require a deep commitment to sustainability. And so we're going to be able to deliver that in almost every one of those projects. The next project is much smaller and has absolutely no leverage, but it is really innovative and really cool. This is technically 35 Parker Street. It is an affordable accessory dwelling unit that is passive house and net zero and was installed by the Housing Corporation of Arlington on a site that they already own. It is affordable in perpetuity to a household that's capital A affordable. I'm just not, I'm trying not to use those area median income numbers because I know everybody gets lost. It is complete, it is occupied, it is a statewide model. If you like your Arlington exceptionalism, this is it. This is a very cool model of using an A D U bylaw to achieve affordability and increased density on a site. We actually proposed to fund it, but realized that it was ARPA eligible, went to the Town Manager, asked him to fund it instead. He agreed, so he actually funded this and we did not. Since we asked him to, we're taking, we're taking a tiny bit of credit for it. You wrote the check, though. This next piece is actually the most proactive, it's, I think, the first time in a long time that the town of Arlington has created and put out a proactive strategy to create affordable housing of a particular type. And we basically said, we have this ARPA money, we need to use it in a relatively short period of time. What can we do with it? We thought, well, what it would work best for is acquiring existing housing and converting it to affordable, which would also be really politically palatable because density is often the thing we end up fighting about when we talk about affordable housing. So we did do that. We put out a request for proposals that offered up to $250,000 per unit to convert existing units to affordable. And we funded three projects. There were a number of others. It was really interesting and it drew in new people into affordable housing. But what we did fund was a two-family in East Arlington, which was acquired by a small local developer and converted to affordable. I think it's 30 years, yeah, for 30 years with, I forget exactly how much we put in, but I think it's a total of $500,000, which was a combination. I think we were a little short on ARPA funds, so the trust put a little additional money into this one. And then the second one here that you see is a new construction nine-unit building that was built in East Arlington, also on Broadway. You know, it's a luxury building that is required to have one affordable unit pursuant to our accessory, excuse me, our inclusionary zoning bylaw. And we essentially incentivized them to buy another affordable unit. We gave them $200,000 grant and they agreed to an additional unit for 30 years. So we've doubled the power of our inclusionary zoning bylaw in that one. But this one is the big win. The next slide shows the next building, which is, I'm not, there's a N D A on this between the Housing Corporation, but the Housing Corporation of Arlington is purchasing a 57-unit multifamily building on Mass Ave. It's actually two buildings. It is a property where there have been tenants who've been getting displaced by improvements being made and rents being increased at this property. So it is a classic example of naturally occurring affordable housing that is becoming not affordable and putting tenants at risk. There had been prior attempts by the H C A to purchase this building and the owner had not been willing. But the program that we put out, Sarah Suarez, was very persistent in following up with this owner about this program repeatedly until they finally responded and said, not only are we interested in having you buy some affordable units here, we'd actually like to sell the entire property to H C A now, can you bring them back? We did. Together, we made grants of $2 million, a combo of ARPA and local money, to H C A. And they have since done something pretty miraculous, which is raise another $20 million of debt and additional subsidies to be able to close on this before the end of this year. So this is a huge win for everyone involved, for the Town Manager, for the H C A, for all of the stakeholders and for the residents of this building. It's not closed yet, so knock on wood, but it seems poised to do so. And then the last one, we did almost nothing related to, but I want everyone to understand the impact of this project. This is actually Majestic Millbrook, which is marketed as luxury condos, but you may know that it was permitted under Chapter 40B. All the trust did with respect to this project was write a support letter when this came before the Z B A because we wanted to point out that this is a homeownership project. And the 25% of affordability being delivered here will deliver 13 affordable homeownership units, which is doubling the number of affordable homeownership units in this town. This is really, really difficult to create. You all understand what the cost of creating a homeownership unit is or buying one. one. To get, make that affordable to a low-income resident or homeowner requires a lot of subsidy and there are very, very few state and federal programs that will subsidize that. So we don't have a lot of options for this. Leverage would be about as bad as possible if we were to say, we're just going to buy single-family units and make them available at low cost. That would be the lowest leverage we could possibly get for our dollars. This is cross-subsidizing it with the profit from the, from the market rate units. So 40B and inclusionary zoning are the ways that we get developers to pay for affordable housing and these are not, these 13 units are not included in that $72 leverage ratio. These are absolutely free to the community. So we don't want people to miss that because it's often hard to approve these developments, but it is important. So last slide is back to that diagram and what comes next? We're going to continue implementing this plan. It's all laid out there and so we invite everyone to refer to the plan or to this update for a specific update regarding every action in the plan. Things specifically intended for this year include the preservation, we're doing a housing, affordable housing inventory to track every affordable unit in town and that will then be combined with capital needs assessments regarding existing housing to create a preservation plan, a long-term preservation plan for existing housing. We will continue to do more affordable housing creation. We expect to continue to support HCA, but our next application, we're going to hear this Thursday, is actually from the Housing Authority, which is putting together a five-unit supportive housing project. We're very excited to support the Housing Authority. They've been really embracing creativity and taking on the role of creating new housing, not just trying to make sure that they sustain and support their residents, sustain their housing, support their residents. And last is building the financial strength of the trust because we want to keep delivering at scale and we'll need additional resources to do that. We're kind of living on a modest CPA award each year at this point and we're going to continue to leverage that as much as possible, but we think we've demonstrated some of what we can do. What we really would like to be able to do is to increase that amount so that we can accumulate some funding and take some, you know, do some more programmatic work, do, take some larger opportunities, attract multiple developers. We do expect to put out a request for proposals or interest from developers this year. That would be affordable housing developers who know how to attract the state and federal resources that will get us leverage. So I feel I've gone on at length, so I'm going to stop and I'll take whatever questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Helman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again for your generosity in bringing this presentation to us. I'd like to move receipt and just make a few very brief comments to highlight, I think, some really important points that Ms. Keller made. And that is, this is really about partnership and this has worked even better than we thought it would. And, and starting with the town manager, honestly, I think that his personal involvement in, in the, the big program, but also that devoting town resources, particularly Ms. Suarez, but other players, has been absolutely key. The gears slide is so beautiful and because I'm privileged to be part of these meetings every month, I've seen it in action. This has brought together all the people in town who care about affordable housing and work on it, but given us a focal point to collaborate and the fact that the Housing Authority is at the table willingly, gladly, part of the conversation. HCA is there, of course. It doesn't feel to me in any of our work that it's competing for limited pie, even though there's a limited pie. It feels like everybody is aware of everybody else's needs, everybody is trying to help everybody else and that is immeasurably beneficial. And the, no small part due to Ms. Keller's leadership as chair, honestly. The trust was set up and town meeting was wise to create it because it does provide agility. We can act much more quickly. Before this, we largely had Community Preservation Act funds that could be awarded kind of on a lumbering one-year cycle and I know that very well because I used to steer that. Now we have the ability to do things quick that, that result in big, much bigger payoffs and that is enabling the town to really catch up to other communities because there is money out there for affordable housing. There are bigger programs and we haven't been in a position to get to a lot of them. So this is keying us, keying, keying us up to be able to do more by being able to respond so quickly and to get that leverage. And the last thing I'll say, because I was privileged to be at the opening, the ribbon cutting for the, for the affordable ADU, and I think I said this when I gave my remarks there, and that is that you often hear the debate about more housing and affordable housing is not in my backyard. This was literally yes, in my backyard. HCA put housing in their own backyard and it works. It fits in, it's beautiful for the neighborhood and I'm so proud of that innovation. And although we, we didn't end up having, claiming any credit for it, we are there to celebrate with them and I think that that's an example of the kind of innovation that Arlington is now starting to see because of tools like this, so thank you.
Mr. Hurd.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for all the work that you do. It's pretty amazing to see on a limited budget what the trust has been able to do in offer to, you know, both town-associated entities, but just individuals, the incentive to create more affordable housing and I think it can create good partnerships in the town. One curiosity question, as we call it. Under the building financial strength of the trust, one of the actions items says cannabis ST rental, what is that referring to? Is it?
Short-term rental fees. When we drafted the action plan, we put together a list of potential sources of revenue. I'm sure that those are conversations about those sources of rental, of income have continued since that moment and we have been in them, but that's what that means.
What is the cannabis aspect of it?
Oh, just tax revenues from cannabis sales in town, which was relatively new at the time we started.
And that goes, this, fortunately that goes into the trust?
It does not.
At present, they're just treating this local receipts.
Okay, yeah. I just was seeing if there was some specific allocation through that, but yeah, and then, you know, I guess for, you know, I know the Housing Authority and the Housing Corp knows how to apply and get in touch with members of the trust. If an individual developer saw a property and wanted to inquire how they could, you know, involve a grant from the trust, how would they do that? Go through the website or?
Yeah, there's contact info on the website. They could contact Sarah Suarez at DPCD as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, that was kind of a question I was going to ask, you know, not quite from a curiosity point of view because I will be kind of driving a point, but I also want to say, there's never such a thing as too much, Mr. Cunningham, especially when you're pulling his fire drop. Okay, so, 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 just wanted to set the.
He's been fabulous. We wish we needed him for real estate matters.
So, so, I might have missed this. I mean, what's the source of the unrestricted funds?
I believe that was developer payments from the Sims Hospital redevelopment, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so there's no more of that, right? Once it's gone, it's gone?
No more coming.
Okay, fine, gotcha. And, uh, so, so you mentioned that you have 16 units that we got for free essentially. So 13 of these are coming from Millbrook, I mean, or Majestic Mills?
I believe they're calling it Majestic Millbrook now.
Okay, and the other three were probably from inclusionary zoning?
Yes, those weren't totally free to the town. We used the ARPA dollars and some mostly CPA dollars or we, we kind of have a blend of CPA and unrestricted funds in there.
Okay, gotcha. So when do you anticipate completing the inventory?
We hope, we expect to have that done this year. I don't have a more specific date for you. It's on our agenda for 2025 and there's a working group that's been created that's done substantial work on the inventory, but we haven't had a discussion yet as a body about how we want to use it and how to format that, how to make it available to the public.
Right, right. So you're not doing this manually though, right? It's kind of, it's.
No, I mean, there is a manual data, it's not a database. I think it's a spreadsheet right now, but we're intending to use a digital tool.
Okay, and so how is that going to factor into decisions that you make?
The idea is to have a clear database that ensures we never miss an expiration of a use restriction, but that also is anticipating the need for investment in the physical needs of the properties that we rely on for affordable housing, which will enable us to maximize our fundraising of third-party sources. So if you know you're going to need to replace windows in three years or replace your roof in something like five years, you can be planning ahead and maximizing other sources.
I got you. So it's an inventory, not only of the number of units, but the condition of the units. Gotcha, okay. So, so on page 20, and I need to flip back to this myself, you mentioned about the affordable housing overlay and the problems that we had with some outreach as a reason for why we, we got a vote of no action. So, so, and maybe I'll ask this question to Mr. Cunningham, Madam Chair. Would it be legal for the trust fund to use funds to do that outreach? Whether, regardless of whether it's appropriate or not, I mean, is this legal?
Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Dinkins, for the question. I'd want to look at that a little more closely. I don't know if I want to provide a legal opinion on that on the spot, but perhaps, and I think Attorney Keller, I think as a chair, we've worked closely and be happy to work with, with the chair again on that question.
All right, all right. So also on page 20, it said, it's creating a predictable path aligned with ARB's goals. So is there the sense that ARB's goals aren't aligned with what we need to do to create more affordable housing?
I, I don't know if I actually, I might be missing where you're seeing that, but.
Okay, let me go back.
Maybe I, would it be all right if I clarify the trust role with respect to this item?
Sure.
So the trust's action planning process sought to identify barriers to affordable housing creation and those are all documented in the action plan. And one of them was that there's not an easy path to permit the kinds of developments that obtain the resources. We're looking for the state and federal resources. So those tend, need to be of a certain scale to get those resources, so you often need additional density. The best and pretty much only path, there's a special permit path, but 40B would be the path and that's, we often are doing a friendly 40B at this point. The town has come a long way in terms of using 40B to work with developers, but there's not a pathway for a developer to be able to do it as a right. So that was identified in the action plan and is one of the actions that the trust would support, but the plan is very clear that we don't have any authority to pass bylaws or approve bylaws relating to zoning. Zoning is not our purview, but it is developing a zoning bylaw that aligns with the affordable how, like the technical needs of affordable housing sort of overlaps the purview of zoning and affordable housing development, among other things. So the trust fund did not advance that warrant article. There was a citizen body and full disclaimer, I am a part of that citizen body in my individual capacity. I was a part of that individual, that body as an individual, but the trust fund itself did not advance that warrant article. There was a citizen body that did.
Right. Well, thanks for the explanation and sometimes my notes are a little too sparse for my own good when, when I take them, you know. So, so I guess my question is, I mean, how would we go about trying to create that predictable path?
Yeah, I, I think that town meeting and its infinite wisdom was, some members were disappointed not to have a bylaw in front of them and proposed an official town committee to explore a new overlay, affordable housing overlay. I believe you guys are going to be appointing someone to that body. There are others who are doing so. That, I wasn't involved with that petition, but I understand it passed and that body will be created and hopefully we'll have the opportunity to bring something to town meeting next year.
I got it, you know, so.
And hopefully that would come before the trust as well as the select board, before it goes to town meeting, of course.
Okay, you know, I, I might pursue that later on, you know, in offline, you know. So, okay, I'll swing back to page 21 here, sorry. So with Mr. Hurd's question, the, about the cannabis taxes, so it said that DCPA made some inquiries in 2023, but it's not been pursued? Do we know why it wasn't pursued?
We haven't really put a lot of focus on alternative ways to fund the trust in the first two years. We did put forth, actually it was the Housing Plan Implementation Committee before there was a trust, put forth a home rule petition for a real estate transfer fee that would have provided a sustainable source of revenue for the trust fund or could have. That was renewed this year in town meeting, but as I think most of you know, we need the legislature to act on that to be able to move forward with that. That would also require further public process locally to develop an actual bylaw and I believe that would have to go to the, to the voters. That is still an open avenue, but because two years have passed and it's proved to have some political challenges, we have a five-year action plan and we want to achieve each of our three goals and one of them is putting a sustainable source of revenue in place. So we feel we're halfway through at this point and it's time to start having conversations about other ways that we might fund the trust. So you see that as a priority coming up for us in 2025 where we did not prioritize it in 2023 and 2024?
Okay, so this is a priority thing. It wasn't like we, we decided not to do it. I got you, okay. Explore options to maximize developer payment to the trust, not start it, requires legal support? What's the issue there? Not enough Cunningham?
It's a good question that I'm going to do, be very imprecise at answering, having not spent any time on this in a long time, but you know, finding ways to provide revenue from development transactions, which might be an alternative, for example, to producing affordable units. You would contribute into a fund and we, we want to explore what legal authority the town might have to raise revenue from, you know, development transactions that are proceeding. We would love to work with Mr. Cunningham on that.
Great, great, thank you. And so the graphic with the, the gears, and CPAC was one of them, but also being on this page, it says that, you know, there hasn't been discussion of coordinating housing awards or court consolidating resources. I mean, is that still an issue? Just read it. It's on page 20, 21, you know, I'm sitting at table, it is the, the second row from the bottom.
Secure revenue streams from, from the bottom. Agree on annual process. Oh, yeah. So I think that the idea here was that once the, the trust fund is established, people understand what we're here for, what we can do, it might make sense to have a single point of entry for housing support, financial support for housing in the town. And that might or might not make sense to be the trust. Right now, you, sometimes HCA go and the Housing Authority go directly to CPAC for CPA money, sometimes they come to us. They might need CDBG money, they might, you know, so it's, it's ultimately arriving at a rational way to allocate resources. We haven't pushed any particular outcome here because we think we're still showing people what we're able to do and trying to find the right answers to that.
Because I mean, your nimbleness is really good, you know, I mean, it would be good if we could find you, I mean, a stable, I mean, reliable source of income, even if it's like in a band, I mean, of reliability, a range, you know. And so to that extent, I understand your reluctance, I mean, to fundraise because you don't want to compete with HCA, but it seems like you play a different role, I mean, and that, I mean, and you've come in and helped HCA out and I would say, don't be afraid, I mean, of the competition because you, I don't think it's that by competing you get less money. I think, I think overall we get more money, I mean, for, for, for affordable housing. It may be that you get some that HCA wouldn't, but the, I think the, the whole lot would be bigger, meaning given your nimbleness, I mean, I think it would be worth it for, for you to have it because it may be that some of the money, you know, that you got that they didn't get, you could help them in a situation where, where they, they needed it, you know. So, and, and partly, if you could, because I think to the extent that we want to make the case to residents, voters, I mean, for maybe being a source of those funds, I mean, can you maybe kind of quantify, I mean, the effects, I mean, of what we are doing? I mean, it plays into our values, but if we were to make, try to make the case to residents and, and override or some of the context, I mean, why it is, I mean, that they should put money directly into the trust fund, I mean, like just say, what is the, the benefit? And it could, sometimes we have intangibles and we say we can't really quantify intangibles, but we can maybe like give attributes, I mean, to, to what we've achieved so that you can kind of measure that against other things that may have those same attributes. And so if you can now, maybe state it, but if not, maybe it's something that we should just think about doing if we want to go to the voters and say, hey, we want you to help support something like this. That's it, thank you, everyone.
I'm going to give you a short answer to that question, if it's even a question, but it's, it's 70 families. but it's 70 families, right? We set a goal of 100 new affordable units in the five-year plan. We're already at 70. That's, you know, supported by us in some way. That's 70 families that have an affordable home in Arlington that didn't have one before. I don't know how to do a better job saying what it means. That's what it means.
Thank you.
First, a second to Mr. Helmut's motion by Mr. Hurd. I want to thank you for this, as well as highlighting and continuing to work with and foster the partnership with Arlington Housing Authority. And a lot of it has to do with your leadership, the town manager, and Mr. Nagel over at the Arlington Housing Authority, is the only member of the board ever to have lived in monotony manor. We didn't know, we called it the zoo at the time. Gardner Street Memorial Way, Fremont. It always, back then, in the 70s, 80s, and now, really struck me as stagnant, that really hasn't been any change down there in so many different ways, whether, you know, in terms of tenancy, things like that, with the exception of the past three, four, or five years, yourself, Mr. Finney, and Mr. Nagel. Before, I didn't really see that partnership, a willingness to not just do the partnership on paper, but actually do it, to show, you know, to not be so territorial and get things done. So I think moving forward, that's, you know, as we try to envision where we're going to go to try to talk about affordable housing, whatever we, you can do, and the town manager with the Housing Authority, Mr. Nagel and our colleagues on the authority of the commission in terms of the properties, their access to HUD and federal dollars, as well as rethinking, retooling those properties to, I think, and I see that that's something that you all are, I've at least seen conversations in things that I've read that year.
We have had those conversations, but the Housing Authority has already put out an RFP for a developer to help them redevelop the cottages at Drink Village, which presents an opportunity to add additional affordable units and revitalize that property. And who knows, maybe someday they'll think about monotony manor in that way, too. I mean, change is really hard and challenging and needs to be approached very carefully and thoughtfully.
And I look forward to those kind of discussions continuing, as well as, Mr. Helmut is our representative on the committee. I'm not sure if there's still going to be a working group, A, a working group, B, in 2025, to put out, I think you said RFQs, requests for quotes. If and when that does move forward, maybe think about expanding. I know one of the action target points were affordable housing developers, maybe also thinking about if we can, if there's some other group, like attorneys or law firms that specialize in affordable housing. Or on the legislative side, if there's a group, I mean, Arlington has people that they either live here, or they work with some interface with Arlington. So maybe when you do, if you do do that RFQ, maybe expand the group. Maybe not to establish a partnership, but to get new ideas.
That's a great idea, and we put something in our action plan, which is a listing of affordable housing professionals who agreed to be an advisory body for us. And so for that, we actually haven't met yet, but we just started that working group, and I pulled in an affordable housing lender who works at Eastern Bank to bring in her ideas and different perspective. But we'll need more, so I really appreciate that suggestion.
And thank you, Mr. Helmut. I know you're putting a lot of effort on this. Any further questions or comments, or accolades, if not on the motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad the slides, we were able to see them.
Beautiful.
Next for approval, agenda item four, request for parking spots at 307309 Broadway for the grand opening on June 28, 2025, for Rush Bowls. Says the proponent is Stephen Douglas. Thanks for sitting with us.
Thank you, thank you.
You get to say your name and establishment for the record.
Yes, so Steve Douglas, co-owner of Rush Bowls, and we are opening on Saturday, so that's why I am here. So what we're proposing to, was actually brought to my attention, we met with the Chamber of Commerce to get some thoughts, ideas, a plan, and she mentioned to, asked to reserve parking spaces for our grand opening, which I didn't even know existed. But you're obviously familiar with 307 Broadway area, there's, we don't have any outdoor space. So Rush Bowls corporate's coming in, and they're proposing that we want this, like, block party theme to get the neighborhood excited and get everybody involved. And the only way I can see that happening is if we block parking spaces to make it safe for kids, children, parents, anybody. So that's kind of where we're at. We're looking at the hiring, like, a balloon artist and like a face painter for the kids, but that's kind of where we're at. So I don't know how else to go about it, unless I reserve some parking spaces for the day to make it safe and enjoyable for the community.
Mr. Hurd?
And how are you going to cordon off the parking spaces?
So that was the other thing. I reached out to the chamber, and they spoke to DPW, and they were opposed to putting up like the barricades that a lot of these outdoor restaurants have, because it takes a significant time setting up.
Yeah.
But they did mention they'll come out and they'll give me traffic cones or whatever else we need to make it safe.
Okay.
So I'll start with that. And then if I need to go a little further, then I'll put some more.
And I'll just pose this through the chair to the town manager, if, you know, assuming you give us the go-ahead that you think that we can make this safe, then, you know, it's certainly good with me. And is that your understanding?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Thank you, Madam Chair. We are prepared to make this safe if approved.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm happy to prove it. Yeah, I was going to Brickstone, I tell the guys in there, it'll be good, I can go in there for my calzone. When I'm not feeling healthy, I'll go to Rush Bowls when I'm.
Perfect, thank you.
Trying to clean it up a little bit.
Glad to hear it.
Because my office is right across the street there, so I'm always in and out of this area. But, you know, thank you for, you know, choosing Arlington. I think, there used to be a place in East Arlington, which I don't think is operating anymore, but, you know, it's a new, it's a business that I think a lot of people will be eager to patronize. So I hope you do well, and I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
And we'll try to stop by for the grand opening.
Perfect, yeah, please do. Saturday, 10 a.m., please.
One thing, I'll just mention, too, is Fusion, in years past, did have dedicated parking spaces that we turned into outdoor seating, because, you know, there's some businesses, you know, few storefronts down, that have it on the block. And so for them, we did create outdoor seating, but it just came to a point where they just didn't need it, they didn't want it, so they didn't reapply. But, you know, if it's something that you're interested in, and you want to try to talk to planning about in the years going forward, you can talk to the planning department about that.
So I could be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told that that is, this is the last year that's happening. So we had proposed, we had talked about putting outdoor seating in front of Brickstone, in front of Rush Bowls, and it was, we were told that it's, this is the last year that that is happening.
So I don't know of any specific restriction. We have parklets all up and down Mass Ave, and it's always up to this board to allow it. It, what would happen with Fusion was, it wasn't really being used, and there was no other business that asked for the parking back. And since they weren't using it, we said, okay, no worse. But if you come in and say, this is, this could be helpful to us, helpful to our business, in a limited area, and then we can review it.
All right, great, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut.
Second the motion.
Second the motion.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, and I'll look to you through the town manager's office, just to coordinate any of your electricity needs. And I know that's in the outline, so I'll leave that to greater minds.
Sounds good.
On a motion, move approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Doesn't ask quick.
We'll now go to consent agenda. I am going to take agenda item 12 off the consent agenda and do that right after licenses and permits, because I know we have people here for appointments. And I expect agenda item 12 might be another long discussion. Everyone's welcome to stay via Zoom or in person, but I want to give the option, so. For the consent agenda, we have an appointment, reappointments. Youth Counseling Center Advisory Commission, Joan Axelrod-Lerick, term to expire January 31, 2027. Carleen Newell, term to expire January 31, 2027. The Library Board of Trustees, Stephen Quinlan, term to expire June 30, 2028. Park and Rec Commission, Phil Lasker, term to expire 6/30/2028. Board of Health, Peter Rice, term to expire June 30, 2028. Cemetery Commission, Michelle Hassler, term to expire June 30, 2028. Rainbow Commission, Andy Rubinson, term to expire June 30, 2028. Conservation Commission, Nathaniel Stevens, term to expire June 30, 2028. Also, Charles Tyrone, expired June 30, 2028. Open Space Committee, Anne LaRoya, term to expire June 30, 2028. Wendy Richter, term to expire June 30, 2028. David White, term to expire June 30, 2028. We have a request, food vendor license, doing business as, DBA name change, is Thrive Cafe, will be Thrive Gourmet, still rhymes. A request, contractor drain layer license, Strongback Systems, out of Bill Ricker, Mass. Request from our Economic Development Coordinator, Katie Luzai, for Patriots Day 2026 banners. A request from our new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Director, Ramsha Baloch. And I apologize if I'm not saying that correctly, am I saying that incorrectly?
Baloch.
Baloch, I remember that. And spoke with the town manager, I anticipate the next agenda meeting, we'll have an in-person meeting on that. Disability pride banners, acceptance of recycling partnership in grant funds, and it seems to be a ritual, request special one-day beer and wine license, July 8, 2025, July 16, 2025, September 29, 2025, October 15, October 27, 2025, and November 5, 2025, meal cafe for wine or whiskey tastings, filed by Jen Rothberg. I will just note that for the board's information, we do have a two-page list of the one-day licenses, which I anticipate at the July meeting, when we have a full board, we'll have a more of a discussion about our policy regarding that. And any updates, changes, revisions, we want to make, I think it's been three or four years, well, no, not for this, I'm thinking of something else. As we know, the Beer Garden is something brand-new, sort of born out of COVID, and, you know, everyone, including us, it's uncharted territory, and we need to make sure we're doing everything as efficiently as we can. So with that, for consent agenda, I'll take a motion by.
Move to approve.
Mr. Helmut, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Hurd, any further discussion or comments?
I just want to say that I think the disability pride banners are lovely. You know, I like the notion that we're doing something like that. I mean, and I was with Ms. Baluch, you know, when we were working on a collaborative, community collaborative project for creating some paintings or something like that, you know, and she had mentioned that she wanted to do this, I mean, and even though there may be challenges in that area for people with mobility challenges, you know, I think it's good to have this and to get the conversation going even more strongly for what we can do to just make, I mean, our whole community more accessible for, not only those with disability challenges, but also those with invisible disabilities. For some reason, I have a problem using that word. I keep thinking, there's got to be a better word, but at the same time, there's pride associated with whatever it's called, and we know what it means. And so I'm glad that she's taken incentive, the initiative to do this. That's it, thank you.
And she did have another agenda item on where she's doing about five other great different things, but I anticipate we'll talk about that at the next meeting, so. On a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We will now go to appointments. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Board of Trustees, Mr. Helmut, did you want to?
I would indeed, and he's our applicant on Zoom. So I want to explain to my board colleagues, who are diligent in their research, why the application letter is for 2022.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is that Ms. Elliott is not a stranger to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees. She has served very capably as the town manager's designee as a non-voting member. And when we recently had a vacancy on the appointed members, the chair, Ms. Kelleher and Ms. Suarez, and I looked at each other and said, wait a minute, we have an extremely well-qualified, hard-working, and competent individual who has been a non-voting member for all three years of the trust. It's time for an upgrade, in our view. And so we suggest that to this body that we, and I conferred with Ms. Elliott that the information in her initial application is still valid, the resume, the CV, and the letter is all up to date, so we didn't make her go through that again. But that's the reason for it, and should the board appoint her to a slot, and I believe she has issued a, submitted a letter of resignation from being the designated for town manager. So should the board appoint this, her, tonight, we do have an individual who we have interviewed, the three of us, who has volunteered to serve as the town manager's new designation, should the town manager wish to do that. So we'd be in good shape there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Ms. Elliott?
Hello, good evening. I was very honored when Eric and Karen asked if I would be willing to step forward to see if the trust, if the select board would nominate me to be on the trust. I've spent most of my, well, almost all of my 20 years as an attorney, as an affordable housing attorney, working on the development of affordable housing, management of it, the programs that make it work and that make it complicated. And it's been a real pleasure to work with the trust, and I would be very honored if I would be able to, you know, serve in this voting capacity.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval of this, and I think Ms. Elliott undersells herself, her remarks and her resume and her letter make that very clear. She has quickly become an indispensable member of the trust and has contributed so much expertise that we're, I'm delighted that she's willing to step up and serve this expanded role.
Thank you.
I think you also, if I'm remembering correctly, told me sometimes she would actually take the minutes?
I believe, I believe Ms. Elliott is currently our secretary.
Yes.
I'm currently the secretary. I, you know, one of the things about being a lawyer is everyone knows you can take the minutes, so.
That's funny you say that, because I was going to say, as someone who's a court reporter, and before current technology, had to pitch in a couple of times at town meeting to actually be the stenographer, being the, having the ability to take minutes of a meeting gives you a grasp of knowledge that really not anyone else has. So I definitely do appreciate you doing that and you bringing that to us. Is there, Mr. Hurd?
I'll second that and just say, as a lawyer, don't ask me to take minutes.
It's hard to do that at a meeting, it really is, but anyway.
It is.
Well, I would just say, I did miss, I mean, seeing what you've been doing in the last three years, but that's okay. I know you're on town meetings, I know you're doing something, you know, and also, it's good to see that, you know, you're also a teacher and that you do work with Food Link, so thank you, thank you once again.
I think I saw Attorney Cunningham's hand go up for, he wants to take minutes at town meetings, so I'll file that in my mental file cabinet.
Whatever's required, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion, if not on a motion by, and I don't mean to make light of that, Ms. Elliott, I mean that well since.
I understand, I totally understand.
On a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item 14, someone who's not a stranger to me, Arlington Civilian Police Advisory Commission, Attorney Kenneth Kolberg, is he joining us by?
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Attorney Kolberg. I have to make an admission that in my life as a court reporter, I have had the pleasure, and I hope the pleasure for Attorney Kolberg, to actually bump into him here and there in my day job. And he's been a longtime Arlington resident. Steve Moniak always says what a great coach you were. If you're still coaching soccer, I apologize, but you're not here tonight in that. If you could just state your name and give us an explanation of your interest.
Well, my name's Ken Kolberg. I'm a longtime Arlington resident, raised three kids here, and served on the Board of Health, and yes, also on the, on the Board of Arlington Soccer Club. And I'm here. And I'm here to participate in the Arlington Civilian Police Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Move approval. I noticed your community involvement on your resume, but I didn't see Voice of Arlington High Hockey on there.
Well.
During COVID, that's all we got.
Yeah, no, I've done a lot, my wife and I are very involved in the community. There's stuff that we've done that I probably forget, but no, but that was not a forgettable thing, and I was a broadcaster for ACMI, I'm a big ACMI supporter as well. And so I broadcasted for hockey and also boys' lacrosse and girls' hockey and boys' hockey and boys' soccer for a lot of years, and had a lot of fun with that. But I had to stop doing that because I was so into it that I would spend a lot of time preparing, and I would learn the rosters of the opposing teams, and it was just such a big-time commitment to do the broadcasting fairly, so that both teams could get some exposure that I just couldn't, I couldn't do that anymore. But I also remember playing hockey with you, Mr. Hurd, I know you're, you're a, we used to play together on the Sunday nights, you would come and grace us with your dexterity.
Well, I've since lost it, but those were the days.
Glory days. Is there a second? Mr. Diggs?
I'll second, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Helmut?
I just want to thank Mr. Kolberg for his long service to the town, but in reviewing your application, it's so gratifying to see just how qualified you are for this, and this is an important commission. I think that we need people with the diversity of background and the legal skills in your case that you bring, so I look forward to your being part of the effort and appreciate your stepping up for it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that remark.
I would echo that, especially around peer review, you know, not to delve into, you know, too much out of my day job, but as, I've been a court reporter for close to three decades now, and it's seen Attorney Kolberg in terms of the law firms he originally worked at, now he has his own, especially the peer review aspect, when I saw that, is the law firm that you're principal of, that you're, and I know you have expertise in that, and I've certainly grown over the years to have a healthy respect for that, especially, I think that will keep you in good stead with the Police Civilian Advisory Committee, being able to see that facet of, of police community work. I think the peer review aspect is going to serve us well. We couldn't afford to hire you, so thank you for volunteering to do, for do, to do that. So on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggs, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you again.
Thank you also very much.
Thank you. We now have an appointment to our Clean Energy Future Committee, Kristin Fritsch.
Hello.
From the building slash construction sector, started out in Land Court, did a lot of construction stuff too, so if you could just say your name and your interest, please.
Yes, Kristin Fritsch, and I'm at 50 Adams Street, I've been an Arlington resident for 14 years, and when we first moved here to Arlington, I worked on the Solarize Arlington effort and was really excited to see the direction Arlington is going. My career, I'm an architect, and I'm a Director of Sustainability at Elkes Manfredi Architects in Boston, and I've been doing this for 25 years. But I, having worked early on in Arlington and raised kids here, now my last just graduated, and I have a little more time to spend volunteering, so the opportunity to be on this committee was perfect for, perfectly aligned with my career, which I've spent working on energy codes and educating design teams on how to build cleaner buildings. So excited to have the opportunity to do that here.
Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am the Select Board Representative to Clean Energy Future Committee, having inherited that from Ms. Mahan, who for many years did that, did that great job, and as such, I'm very happy to move approval. And wow, just, I didn't know you did the Solarize Arlington until I read your materials, and that was a great effort, and you've been involved ever since in the work. So we are looking forward to having you join us on those Friday morning early Zoom calls. I think they're hybrid now in person, they'd probably be thrilled if someone actually showed up in person. So I will see you then, and thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
I'll second, and just say, I was very, very impressed by your resume. It's very thorough to have a seven-page resume at six font, so you've obviously done a lot of work, a lot of amazing things in your career, so we're lucky to be able to have your services on the committee, so thank you. And did I second that?
Yes. Mr. Diggs?
Thank you, yes, I mean, the CV really was impressive, with the number of projects, but I have a question for you, is so, you mentioned that there's the Women in Green History, like Roundtable something that you did in 2021?
Yes.
So who was your favorite woman?
Oh, gosh, that's really tough. Now, of course, you asked me, blinking on the name.
That's okay, that's all right.
But she was a Chicago advocate for portable housing, actually, in Chicago.
That's okay.
She was pretty impressive and pretty amazing, and sort of the founder of the green, the sustainability movement as well.
Yeah, I mean, the fun in reading, you know, these resumes, is these little nuggets from the areas that, well, some of us don't know a lot about it all, so it's just cool to see that. And in my alternate universe, where we have like a big development in monotony manners, a big public-private partnership, and then something massive in the Heights, and something massive in Arlington Center, and a new town hall, I'd love to see you managing all those projects, but that's in another universe. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And once again, when we always talk about the residents we have in Arlington and the expertise that they bring far surpasses, we're so fortunate to have you to volunteer for this committee. I appreciate all your mentorship highlights that you provided us in your resume, CV, et cetera, because I think that's really moving forward for the Clean Energy Committee. A lot of it is being able to talk about the programs to people that this isn't their world. I know you're credentialed in just about every single credential you need to have for your field of work, but a lot of us, regular folk in the community, aren't. And especially with, you know, the comments and what you've put in, what you've done for mentorship, and someone who you mentored provided some remarks on that. I'm really excited in moving forward, along with our designee, Mr. Helmut, who also has that ability to not talk down to people, but to really explain a complex issue.
Yeah.
A, explain it correctly, and B, not overdo it so that, you know, they don't need salmon necks that night, you know?
Exactly.
They have to remember that conversation. So I want to thank you for bringing that, I'm really excited to see what you're going to do on this committee, which does meet early on Friday morning still, I didn't realize that. So with that, on a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you for saying what?
Thank you.
Great patience.
We now go to 16 and 17 are pretty much related, but 16 for approval, alcohol license, Jose Tortilla in Arlington on Mass. 793, Mass Ave. And I believe, is this, if you could just state your name and?
Yes, my name is Carlos Mendez, owner of Jose's Torta Mexican in Arlington, and I've been resident of Arlington since 28 years. Volunteer before I moved in, volunteer as a coach soccer for many years here, more than two decades, and my girls grew up here. And basically, what I wanted to is bring Jose's Torta Mexican to the next level, providing food service. I applied for food liquor license, so basically I need your support in that venture. And yeah, I want to make Torta food service, because I noticed after five, we have thoroughly emptied tables, and I want to fill them up.
Yeah, and how long have you been there?
Since 19, but I did have Jose's Cambridge for more than 20 years, and that's how I introduced the culture of Mexican culinary to the Arlington community, by providing food from Jose's to the clubs, you know, soccer club, you know, boys and girls, and also the bracket school, we did a lot of volunteer there as well.
Excellent. So on agenda item 16, is there a motion, Mr. Hurd?
Are you changing anything on the inside of the building, the layout?
No, there is not much to change. Basically, we just want to keep a small.
Is it going to be a bar somewhere?
Small bar, yeah, it needs to be, because we need to provide margaritas.
Do we have a plan for that? Do we have, like a layout of the plant, or is that required, Attorney Cunningham? Through the chair? I guess, and maybe I'm wrong, and usually when there's an alcohol license, we have some sort of a layout of what the interior of the?
Yes.
Of what, if any, changes.
Yeah, there is a, we're actually going to upgrade the seating capacity.
Okay.
From 19 to 26 to 28.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I might have just missed it, is it in the materials?
No, I don't think so. It's not in the materials, but we do have a floor plan that's, I can upload to.
Okay.
Don't miss out on that.
I mean, I'm happy to move approval.
Subject to.
Yeah, subject to, and I see that in one of the inspection reports, it says there has to, there has to be a plan for the Health Department. But, you know, I certainly want to support businesses and?
Thank you, appreciate that.
You gonna, do you have a good spicy margarita?
Yes, we're going to have jalapeno, oh, you'll see.
Jalapeno margarita is my favorite, so.
Yes, yes, we have one that is in Cambridge, we have the best from, one of the best in Boston, from the Fenton Gourmet.
Okay.
So qualified, grade A.
All right, I'll move approval, subject to working with all of the applicable departments.
Inspectors.
Mr. Helmut?
I think I will second that. Before I moved to Arlington many years ago, I lived in West Cambridge, and we went to Jose's there quite a lot, and many a good meal there, and I think a couple of spicy margaritas perhaps. So I'm glad that you're doing business here in town, I wish you well on this. I did want to ask you, you did see the Fire Department's concerns about the necessary expired tags and tag batteries to fix?
Yeah, we're fixing that.
And that's all taken care of, okay, yeah. So I'll second that, as a motion subject to conditions, right, yeah. Good luck to you.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
On this agenda item, motion by Mr. Hurd, subject to conditions, seconded by Mr. Helmut, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Then we have an application, agenda item 17.
I'll say.
Two, oh, one more, you have one more request?
Yes.
Actually, two requests.
Yes.
Approval for a parklet and sidewalk cafe application.
Yes, I noticed that also I could apply for the outside door, the, in front of the store, outdoor seating, and I noticed the other restaurants have that, and I did apply, and thank you for reminding me that, because that is, I applied for that as well.
The way I see it, it's actually two things, you want approval for the parklet, which would be a parking space, but you also have an approval for sidewalk.
Yeah, there is.
Which would be, so you want tables on the sidewalk part that?
Yes.
That it says we have to comply with the ADA requirements, but then you also want the parklet, which is the parking spot on the street.
I applied for that as well, yeah, because I want to have, I want to make it festive, you know, look, you know, make it, make it more visible, basically, at that side. Because it's like, you know, it's very nighttime, it's like dead, so I want to make it lively over there, festive, basically.
Okay. Mr. Helmut?
I'm happy to support, have we had a motion yet? I'm sorry, no, move approval, and I just wanted to note, now having scrolled to this, that the seating area, the floor plan for the restaurant is part of this application, so it's there, we were not hallucinating, it turns out, so I'm happy, but I just wanted to point out that that was there, and I'm happy to see that, respect to the prior item that we voted, but I think this is a great help to the business, I'm glad you're taking advantage of it.
Mr. Hurd?
A question probably to town manager through you, through the chair, I shouldn't say you. Has, when an application such as this comes in, has it been reviewed by planning or anybody in town to make sure that there's sufficient, maybe it should be, so the board administrator, that there's sufficient, you know, clearance for people to walk those sidewalks, you know, there's a lot of students in this area, so I just want to make sure that we're not creating any safety concerns with both of these areas. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Hurd. While I would defer to Board Administrator Mar on the details, I will note that is a task often assigned to inspectional services to ensure we maintain that 48-inch clear width for pedestrian passage.
All right, I'll second.
Mr. Diggs?
So I have a question too, so it seems like this is going to go, the parklet's going to go to the curb?
No, because there is a fire.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, yeah.
Yeah, there is a fire, what do you call it?
Yeah, hydrant.
Hydrant, yes.
All right.
So we're going to, we're going to, you know, the red line?
Yeah.
So we're going to start from the red line, it's just like one park in the half, but I did pay for, when I apply, I pay for both parkings, but we're going to have only like half a little bit, and then the other one.
Okay.
And I also spoke to the French cafeteria, and he was very excited, hopefully we can join, but he did not apply, so he said he's going to see how it goes with me, and then he will apply as well, because he really liked the idea.
Who said?
Oh, the French, the butternut bakery.
Oh, okay, all right, that's interesting, okay, so.
And they do have seats in the front, I mean, tables.
Yeah, they do, yeah. So I'm glad you brought that up, because I was interested in knowing how, if you talk with them, so you have to talk with them, and they like the idea, because one of the concerns that we have, I mean, is sometimes, I mean, people who, we have customers who shop for a short amount of time, we feel that, well, these parking spaces that would be used, I mean, for short-term purchases, we are now completely blocked off, because you're going to have, I mean, that space 24/7, you know. So how much is the application fee for the parklet?
For the front?
$2.50?
It's $2.50?
$2.50, yeah.
Which we're going to have a policy discussion about that moving forward, but it's $2.50 a year. And the year is, correct me if I'm wrong, April to November.
That's correct, yeah.
So, that's a good fee?
Yeah, that's why we're going to discuss that.
Right. Okay, I'll just leave it at that.
But that's not, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, and we're not doing anything like mysterious or anything like that, but I know that myself and others in the Select Board Office have looked at what other cities and towns do with, the parklets were kind of born out of COVID.
Yes.
And that, and it's always amazed me that people are okay with being out in the street now that all the traffic is returned, but they have. But the other thing is, the fee, when I feel when it was originally set, it was businesses were struggling so bad that, you know, we were trying to do everything to keep them, especially food business, you know how that is, but now moving forward, cities and towns, they've looked at these particular things, which we may look at for next year or the year after, in terms of what our policy should be going forward. And my only thing would be, and you don't have to do this, but I've noticed it, especially at a business in the Heights, if you see, you know, you've set up five tables, which would take two, possibly three parking spots, if for some reason you're a three-table establishment, if you could maybe modify that, and maybe, you know, get, get the parking spot back, or if another business applies to it, but you don't have to do that, once you get the approval, you get it, but?
Yeah, basically, we are only taking like one, because the other one is kind of part of the hydrant.
Okay.
So we, we're not going to take the hydrant, although we are paying that parking spot, but we're just taking like a little bit of that.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe four meters, four feet.
And we certainly want to do whatever we can to keep your business in Arlington, because it's a great business.
Thank you.
And you've been a great resident. And it's, you've been a great resident and community member and we do appreciate that.
And I love Arlington. We love Arlington, you know. We want to bring a little bit more of the rich culture of Mexico.
Ms. Mar?
I would just note that it's fifty dollars for a sidewalk, which is on the sidewalk, and two hundred and fifty for taking up a parking space. So his application would be three hundred for both.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Messed up. The good thing you did it. Okay, if any further questions or comments on a motion by Mr. Helmut to approve, questioned by, questioned, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Now you're all done.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
See you in Margaritaville.
See you, sir.
We will now go to, goodbye, before citizens open the forum, we'll go back to request special one-day beer and wine license, July seventeenth, July thirty-first, August fourteenth, September eleventh, September twenty-fifth, at fifteen Ryder Street for a Ryder Street social. Requested by Travis Richter. I did go down this morning, as my colleagues are aware, and I want to thank my colleagues for forwarding me emails that sometimes I don't get because my town account gets a little, Mr. Helmut has my back on that, as well as Ms. Mar. Ended up meeting with three neighbors down there on this particular agenda item, plus other issues, which will be for another day. And again, we have from Arlington Brewing Company, they've personally requested and been granted twelve one-day licenses. But then with the way the law is written, some would call it a loophole, there are an additional thirty-seven requests, but using organization or person's name instead. I do know that some of our department heads, town employees have been involved in this issue. I, going down there, meeting with the neighbors, walking the site, have a lot of concerns, but where I'm chair, I should not talk first and talk the most. But I just want to say that on the outset. I don't know if, before we get into this agenda item, I want to ask the town manager, would you, is there anything you'd like to say first? Should I go to the applicant or go to, but I want to give the town manager first right of refusal.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it would be appropriate to hear from the applicant about the event and what they're planning.
Okay. And I believe we have someone joining us, either Mr. Richter and/or Mr. Allen, whoever would like to speak, or both.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Travis Richter from Arlington Brewing Company. Thank you for the time and we look forward to answering the questions and addressing any concerns that we have with this. We're just really trying to look for, to build more community with Arlington Brewing and we've had such great success in the events that we have gone to through date with the Jason Russell House and the, working with the town at the Arlington Reservoir. And this is just an extension of that and we would like to use the space, which will ultimately become our top room for an outdoor beer garden at that space.
Okay. Would my colleagues like to go first, Mr. Hurd?
I think, you know, I read the concerns. I didn't go down there. I think, you know, a lot of the concerns are concerns that will exist, not relatively specific to this beer garden, but just in the operation of the business there, you know, once it opens with traffic and parking. So certainly something that we need to work out. But, you know, it's also the business, a business in town that has gone through the process to get approvals and will ultimately likely operate a beer hall there. And so, you know, we do have to, at some point, address these issues and, you know, it's gonna be what it's gonna be, as they say. But, you know, I think, you know, I guess for me, where it's not, in, you know, there were a whole number of concerns, but to me, the main concern seems to be traffic flow and parking, which again will be something that has to be addressed. You know, there is parking at Ed Burns Arena. I can tell as a hockey dad and a baseball dad, there's not much going on over there these days. So there should be, you know, ample parking. I think it is an area that we need to take a look at. You know, I think, as the chair alluded to, but I think it rolls into this discussion is, you know, a number of us have probably, have likely gotten residents concerned about, you know, some items that are in front of the recycle center, which I, you know, I've gone down there and create sort of a barrier to people walking in and around that area that are cutting through from the bike path area, you know, coming down what actually, I mean, it is a street, Ryder Street goes all the way out to Summer Street. So I think it's something that we should, we as a town, separate from this application, should take a look at whether or not we can move some of those barriers to make safe passage into this event, you know, for anyone that's on Ryder Street and in anticipation of, you know, more foot traffic, once the more permanent business ultimately opens. Parking on private ways is tough, right, because we've got, we've dealt with private ways at length and, you know, technically people can't park in front of a house on a private way, right? But I think in practice, you know, you could put a sign that says you'll be towed, but if you call a tow truck and say, can you tow this car in front of my house, they're gonna show up like, I can't touch that, that car because it's on private property. So, you know, I don't know what the solution is. I think it's a discussion that we need to have, maybe with the business, again, with this event and going forward to see how they're gonna work with neighbors to make sure that nobody is inappropriately parking. We did this, or the ZBA did this when they were licensing the Heights Pub, right, where they, the business agreed to put a sign in the door and it still exists there to this day that says, please don't use the Daggastino's parking lot, right? And, you know, I think that was a good gesture of neighborly concern that, you know, I would like to get an idea how we can address that. But then again, you know, this is, the, the street is what it is and, you know, and this is, you know, appropriately placed business going forward. And I mean, it's a solution that we'll just have to come up with.
But you know, there's no business there for two years.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's something, the concerns that they have are concerns that will exist. I mean, I don't anticipate any dramatic changes in either being private way or, you know, the landscape of the street. I guess I'm just saying that, you know, it's, for me, it's not prohibitive of the event. Now, I mean, if the rest of the board feels it's just not an appropriate location, then I'm fine with that. But, you know, if it's, you know, they're trying to operate an event similar to what they anticipate operating in two years going forward and, you know, it could be a test run to see, you know, what issues arise that we work out before the main event. So I'm not, I'm not gonna make any motions. That's just thoughts for now.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll leave it at that for now.
I sort of see it as a, just, I'll try to be brief. A circumventing of the process, the redevelopment board voted four to one. Mr. Benson voted in the negative. One of the guiding parts of that vote was that, number one, the proponents indicated it's gonna be a two-year process. And as far as I understand, that's just to discuss the actual business inside the facility, nothing about outside. But the big caveat that the other four, as well as the dissenting vote, Mr. Benson, was that there be a series of meetings with the town and with the neighbors and the abutters, talking about the inside business. So to me, this is a circumvention of, we're dragging out our plan for probably financial reasons. Stuff has gone up. There's tariffs, there's not tariffs, you know, it's not gonna be done in April, it's not gonna be done in September. And I'll stop there, but I think you know where I'm going with that, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a couple of questions of the applicants. Thank you for bringing this in. And, you know, I do want to say I appreciate the kind of business that you've been in Arlington. I think that you, in addition to supplying a quality product, have had a really good track record of responsible management of beer garden and related events and it's been seen by a number of nonprofits and town institutions who have increasingly chosen, chosen your crew to put on good events that are family-friendly, that people don't get drunk at, you know, and, you know, I'm not aware of any problems, but I guess I would like to stop and just check with the town manager to your, if I, through me, through, through the chair, to your knowledge, have there been any issues with crowd problems or noise complaints at any of the prior events that associate with this applicant?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Helmut. I'm not immediately aware of any concerns from prior events.
Thank you. That's my impression as well. What I would say, though, is, and this is, I guess, a question for the applicant, that I appreciate and, and actually am very interested to see the rollout of the eventual business here and I think that'll be a transforming, transformation of that industrial space and I'm all for that in general. But this is different in that, if I understand right, you're proposing to hold this, this community beer garden in the parking lot of the eventual business. So if that, if you can confirm that, but then also answer, where do you envision people parking and, and how do you envision the traffic through in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood as it is today for these events?
Thank you for your question. Yes, so we are planning to do the event in the parking space and the outdoor space that is outside of the building itself, in that kind, confines of that area. As far as parking is concerned, we are gonna be directing people to walk and to ride because it is right off the bike path to the event. We're gonna be encouraging that and that is a big part of our marketing and of the event. And as far as I'm aware, I think there are about a hundred parking spots or so on Mass Ave and that's about a five-minute in the walking distance to Ryder Street. And that's where we will be directing people who wish to drive to the event, to there. And we will also be on our website and in our social medias explaining where to park, which would be where we're gonna be proposing is mostly on Mass Ave and where not to park would be Ryder Street.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
May I jump in if you can hear me?
Of course, of course.
This is Tom Allen. I'm the founder of Arlington Brewing Company and I appreciate Travis's efforts. So Travis is new with us and he's kind of running our events, which is why he, he pulled, he applied for this permit. But I did want to address a couple of items where Travis wasn't around when we went through the ARV special permit process because I think they can be kind of clarifying, especially based on the comments that have been made in this meeting. So if I could have just a minute just to kind of like walk through a couple of things. So the first thing.
Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen.
Excuse me?
Just a second. I, I, I want to give you that opportunity, but I, I'm not kind of, I want to keep going with my line of questions.
Right now, we're at the.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think at this point, board members are asking the applicant's questions and at the chair's discretion, you can make further statements. Thank you. So I, I want to stay focused on this event because we were contacted by members of the neighborhood who I think had some, some, as much as I understand and like I said before, and appreciative of the well-managed events you run at other locations, I do have some concerns about this site right now. So I, you know, and I don't, I don't presume that you've, that you are aware, but have you been in touch with the neighborhood residents about these events and discussed their concerns?
No, I don't believe in that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I believe you said no.
Yeah, okay, all right. And, yeah, I think, and I do appreciate Mr. Richter's suggestions for, you know, where people would be directed to park. And I think that is good to hear in that since obviously you won't, you'll be using the parking lot for the event, you know, people won't be able to park there. I do think that if this event were to go forward, these events go forward, that would be really, really important. And I still, I still am left with, with the concerns that the neighborhood has brought up and I think the chair may be able to inform us of more of that from her meeting this morning when, when I'm done here, when she speaks. So putting a pin in that for a second, I want to pivot to another question and I think through the chair, I may want to ask Attorney Cunningham for an interpretation of a separate issue that has bearing on this application. And I just, I just on my computer here read the ABCC's guidance, its interpretation of the law. And I don't remember if that's a CMR regulation or if that's a statute right now, but Attorney Cunningham can let us know. There's a limit of thirty events or special licenses given to an individual and it makes mention of an individual that may represent a business. And so we do, we have a list here and I think that this company has, as I said, provided a number of really successful and popular events around town and I'm glad for this. But the question is to interpretation of the statute or the regulation and you can tell us which it is. And how that would apply in the case where you have a different individual name that would pretty much get us there in terms of the total number of licenses, but if we were to interpret that, that, instead of applying that thirty to the business. And like Attorney Cunningham's advice on that question, because if, if we can't do licenses, more than thirty licenses to a business, for me, that preamps the discussion. So Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Helmut and thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's an evolving area of law, Mr. Helmut. I think that, that the regulations, I think, fairly contemplate thirty for a business. The question for Arlington is who's the, is an applicant the business? If an applicant retains a company who's been an applicant previously, does that count to the total? Communities have struggled with this and the courts haven't firmly weighed in yet. I think a safe interpretation would be that certainly in an instance where a company or a corporation is the applicant itself, then that's, that's an instance. I think also fair to say that in instances where that company is collaborating actively with the applicant, those can also be counted towards the thirty number. Different from perhaps, a more, a different reading would be that in the instances where some other outside entity just retained a company and they're not part of the application process and they're just going onsite to provide service, that would not necessarily count against the total. But again, this is an evolving area of law and I think that there's been quite a bit of, it's fair to say abuse, I think, in other communities. I think Boston in particular has run against this where they had individuals who, that they have beer gardens going on in the summer on the Greenway. They had not only the entity itself, but then they would switch around different individuals from that entity that would then, they would argue under the statute or the regulation would qualify as a separate time and they could essentially get it.
Yeah, yeah.
And beyond thirty for a particular business. So the, the courts or the legislature is gonna have to weigh in at some point and provide further guidance. But I think firm ground for the town of Arlington to stand on at this time would be to count a business's application as one. But then when they're working in close collaboration on a repeated basis with entities, then that could arguably be counted as an instance as well.
Thank you. That is helpful, Attorney Cunningham. I think, and I ask that not so that we have a reason to deny this. I just wanted to make sure that we're being appropriate, I think, in our interpretation of the law. It could well be that the law needs to change, you know, that to accommodate the sudden popularity of beer gardens. And I will say too, although I, my reservations about this permit continue, I'm not opposed to beer gardens. In fact, I have been to a few here in town, including one by the applicant. They can be wonderful community-building events. So this is not coming from me being a funny dud at all. I just think that, you know, so, and so maybe the limit needs to be raised, but we're not in a position to do that as a town. So, so I appreciate that. I would, and I appreciate the chair's indulgence, would like to ask Mr. Allen perhaps, in your words, what is, what is your, your vision and your purpose for, for the Ryder Street events?
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. I appreciate the opportunity. And sorry about Steve Merling earlier. So we, we love the opportunity here for us to kind of, A, continue to do events and continue on the success and the community building that we've done in the past and kind of fill in every other week gaps because we're only doing every other week at the, at the Arlington Res. So it was an opportunity for us to kind of keep that going and give more opportunity for people to come and enjoy each other and us and our product. And also, it was an opportunity for us to do more or less a dry run. We have been granted the special permit to operate the brewery in the space and that special permit does. special permit does have a number of conditions on it, which we fully intend to satisfy for an event like this. But we thought it was a great opportunity to get in there and actually do something and see what it was going to be like when we are operating, while we work on all of the other million things that we have to do in order to get the kind of permanent brewery and taproom up and running. The chair was accurate in saying that it is taking longer than we anticipated in terms of doing the build-out, and so we were hoping that we would, this would be an opportunity for us to get a little bit more revenue, but also, more importantly, to get some experience, because then as we move forward and finish with the design, and finish with our logistics, and finish with all of our operational concerns, we can kind of take what we've learned from this and implement it as we go towards the, the full vision of the space.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. One final observation, Madam Chair, and then I promise that I'm done. I think too, and I'll pivot back to the other issue, it just occurred to me, I think the very fact that we have representative, the owner of the, an owner of the company here with the applicant, for me, does cement these together as, as one entity. I'm not sure we should exceed the 30 permits for this combination.
May I, Mr. Helmoth, may I say something to that?
Not right now. Write it down on a piece of paper, because I want to finish with my colleagues. I want to make sure Mr. Helmoth has finished, as well as, I believe, there are two or three neighbors who I told them I would give them up to three minutes to also speak to this, and then we'll just come back to you all. So I'm keeping track of, Mr. Helmoth can attest too that I'm writing down questions, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a question to the applicant, so you expect 150, so what happens if more than 150 show up? That's today.
I'm not, I'm not sure we have space for a whole lot more than that. It's not nearly as large as a, as the Res or the Jason Russell House, so I just don't think we have room for like 1,000 people.
But what happens if more than 150 show up?
They make a lot of noise.
I think people have to wait to get in.
All right, that's fine. You know, so-
Are you asking if we're ever going to like count the number of people at the door? Because I think my answer might differ slightly, if that's, if that's the gist of the question.
Well, it's essentially getting that crowd control, I mean, so do you have some way of controlling, I mean, the number of people that even try to get in? So if you see that it's getting, I mean, unwieldy, do you have some plan in place to, to stop crowding, I mean, in that area?
Yeah, okay, thank you for the clarification. We have crowd, certified crowd managers on staff, and they know that it is important to not let it get overly crowded, and we also have, the way that the spaces be set up, there'll be essentially one main entrance, and so we'll be able to kind of monitor the number of people in the space through that main entrance.
All right, thanks. Well, I'm going to limit this to questions at this point. I do have some thoughts, I mean, about, I mean, the overall, I mean, number of days, but I'll save that for after, I mean, the other people speak, I'm just, I'm just kind of reserving my space.
No, I'm definitely going to do a round robin and come back, and I've been writing things down, including the applicant's saying that this is a dry run, but they're asking for multiple dates, as well as gaining experience to the business, as well as, I'm going to leave a question with town council that, I understand there's lots of loopholes in this law, and this particular company certainly is taking advantage of it, but I think it's within the board's discretion to, that we determine who the applicant is sort of piggybacking, I'm not saying this is what Mr. Helmoth was saying, but I think it's legally and within our discretion that while they, there may be different names, if we determine that, Tom Allen, 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 and going on and on, and then add Travis Richter in there 10 times, we can determine that that has to all go, it's obviously the same business entity, and we're up to 49 if our licenses that have been requested and granted. Mr. Hurd, did you?
Yeah, I just have a comment.
And one second, if I could just ask the two or three neighbors if they're still with us and they still want to speak for up to three minutes, if you're on Zoom, because I know you're not here, which is fine, please just raise your hand, so we'll have you in the queue. Sorry, Mr. Hurd.
No, I just, you know, comment to some of the issues that have been raised, and we've talked about the number of licenses before. To me, now this, if this company, you know, they're, they're right now brewing in the basement, if they had made no effort whatsoever to try to find a space in Arlington, I would have more issues with the number of licenses. I don't, I think they're, you know, just trying, the name of the business is Arlington Brewery. They for years have said they want to open in Arlington. They have not found, they've struggled pretty mightily to find an appropriate location. So, you know, they, I think they've made extraordinary efforts to keep the business operating in Arlington, which is within the name of it. So I just want to point out that, you know, I'm sure there are plenty of businesses that brew in a certain location, and they try to take advantage of as many licenses as they can, but for me, where this business has been active, the only reason they're getting the one-day beer and wine licenses is because it took them so long to find a location in the town that they were able to operate it. So I, just personally, and I'm one board member, I am less concerned with the issue of the number of licenses, and, you know, if it's within the board's discretion, it's not something that makes it prohibitive to me, just for the fact that I know that they've, since Ally was here, have been working to try to find an appropriate location for the business.
Right, and what I had always heard, that they needed to find a business where they could manufacture instead of doing it in their basement.
Yeah.
And I'm very concerned that for the, for this particular request, for a dry run, but they're asking five, six, seven dates, for a for-profit business, which isn't even being considered with the ARB, that's just, that they haven't met with the neighbors, that there is, is a serious public safety concern. And for them to say 100 to 150 people, and people are going to park in Mass Ave, and the 18 spaces they do have in front of their building, they're going to use for the entertainment, and they're going to use bike racks, they're saying 100 to 150 people when they say, I, the other places where we've had the beer garden, Jason Russell House, Jefferson Cutter, Old Schwamm Mill, Arlington Reservoir, it's not Ryder Street, and this is people's neighborhood. And I know, and I'm not saying they said this, but this is kind of an area that's an affordable neighborhood, area for renters, and for people who own their homes down there. And it's not the best place to live, that you're already neighboring with the town, recycle, Muzzioli, Artemis, we're doing a thing for Artemis because they need more parking spaces, you know, and this neighborhood is bearing all that, and now all of a sudden for them to say, oh, 100, 150, I don't believe that, because in the applications for like the reservoir dates, it's like 250 to 300, and we get 1,000 to 2,000 people there. But, but that site can handle it in terms of public safety, and parking, parking's, but my big thing is public safety, and I just, you know, I know we're going to hear more, and I'll make sure I call on the neighbors, but, you know, I think you're getting the sense that I'm not in favor of one, two, three, four, five, six different dry runs. The public safety issue, the hesitancy through the redevelopment board when talking about the building that's going to take two years to meet with the neighbors, which they haven't. Now, they could say, hey, it's a two-year process, we don't have to meet with them right now, but not meeting with the neighbors, and let me tell you, you may not want to take my word for this, they know who the neighbors are, and they've chosen not to meet with them, and they are in a neighborhood. And I, with all due respect, I don't see why, I understand it's only 10 or 11 neighbors, but they're Arlington residents, it's an affordable neighborhood, it's a neighborhood we're going to maybe increase their taxes through an override, to all of a sudden shove this down their throat, and there's been none of that. And my number one concern is public safety. It's parking, and I don't believe for a minute they're going to stop and say, okay, that's it, 150, nobody else. They want to make money. They can't open their business for two years because they've chosen not to, it's not in their capital plan, they're extending it out to put the cost over two years versus getting it done. That's their right to do that, that's their business plan. But I really think this poor neighborhood is just getting, I'm trying to think of a better R-word than the one I'm thinking of, but, but I do want to go back to Mr. Hurd and then find out, do we have any hands raised in Zoom? How many?
We have two.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Hurd.
That's all right, I just wanted to clarify that my comments were just, weren't specific to the merits of this application, it's just that, you know, the limitation of the licenses. So I'm not, I completely, I'm not pushing back on anyone's concerns about this particular event, and it sounds like we're not, we don't have enough information to move forward with the event, and we'll see how the discussion ends, but I just wanted to clarify that what I was talking about relative to licenses and their effort were just, you know, our, we had the discussion, you know, six, seven months ago about the number of licenses. So that particular issue just doesn't stick with me, it's not relative to this particular event.
Right, that's July's meeting, and I apologize, I'm a little too passionate about this, but I've lived in these neighbors' shoes, and before I call on the neighbor's first, Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just hope I can make a couple of clarifying legal points. First, in response to some of the discussion, as I mentioned, the area regarding the determination of number of days is evolving. I'm not sure we're on solid, real solid legal ground that they've reached 30 at Arlington Brewing Company, based on the information that we have to date. You can make an argument, but that's not a certainty at this stage. Certainly the 12 that they've served as the applicant are certain, others could be. The second point, and I think it's trying to distinguish the special permitting process at the site from what's before the board right now. This is a Chapter 138, Section 14 application for a special one-day permit, and this board is, that's all it's looking at tonight, for a number of dates, but this board has significant discretion when evaluating that type of license application, that you are the local licensing authority, you know, you can review certain matters related to safety considerations, public considerations. Those are appropriate considerations for the board to look at when considering this type of application. And the ABCC, who would be the entity responsible for reviewing any action, negative action taken by the board, is going to grant deference to the board's decision and consideration of those issues. So I just want to kind of separate out the special permitting process that the ARB has gone through from what the, what this board has tonight.
And you've heard me say public safety like 85 times, right?
Yeah, public, I mean, looking at some of the, the decisions on this issue, public interest considerations is entirely valid thing for this board to consider when looking at Chapter 138, Section 14 license. That can include situations where the concerns about public health, safety, order, you know, those types of issues, traffic, that, you know, and whatever this board decides, I'm just pointing out that those are proper legal considerations for the board to evaluate when making its decision.
Thank you. And now Ms. Mar, I think we have two residents, then we'll come back.
Yep, I'll promote them now.
And I'll just remind them if I, up to three minutes, please. Thank you for hanging in there with everyone else. And then when you are on, just name an address for the record.
It looks like one of the members is having trouble connecting their audio, so they might need to join by phone, but.
Hello? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, perfect, hi. My name is Stephanie Hawn, I'm with my husband, Peter Marianos, we live at 17 Beck Road. We did meet with the chairperson today.
Residents with some of the concerns that we had. Just have a few talking points in relation to this special license. First, I know it was mentioned, but it was a little taken aback that the residents themselves were not contacted about this special license request, considering all of the meetings that were in attendance for the special provisions for the business to even move forward because of the safety concerns. There are lighting concerns, there are noise concerns, there are traffic concerns, there are safety traffic concerns, and all of that, when you add liquor in, is just amplified. Beer gardens are a wonderful thing, we have them all through Arlington, and the one at the reservoir and the one at the beer garden is actually either sponsored and/or hosted through Arlington Beer. So we just honestly don't see how having another beer garden at a location that hasn't even been opened, that is going to be on the bare pavement with a fence around it, and there's really no control on the number of residents that will attend this beer garden, there's not a safety contingency plan in place through police if it reaches 1,000 patrons that technically we've seen at the reservoir before. We are private ways, we are different than the Jason Russell House, we are different than the reservoir. This is our homes, and we're not looking to have residents circling around our two separate private ways trying to find parking because they're not going to park on Mass Ave on a hot summer day and walk. They're going to park in front of our homes. That's what they do with events at the recycling center, that's what they do at events at the rink. So we kindly ask that because this business has not even been opened yet, to please consider to not approve these dry runs and really test it out on the poor residents that have to deal with the consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And one other person you said?
Yes, I've promoted them, I'm hoping, if you just want to try and unmute your mic. Perfect.
Is it me?
Yes, it is you.
It is you.
Hi, so I have that, hi, my name is Mariah Contreras, I live at 2 Ryder Street. I joined really late, I was hosting a number of people for a lovely family reunion tonight. Neighbors, if I kept any noises, I hope I kept all my noises to the right decibel. I was really surprised that the applicants did not do the neighborly thing, the right thing, and inform this neighborhood, the, you know, the many, the dozens of households that live on a private way, and the Beck, private way, for their intentions to hold a beer garden on the asphalt or in the warehouse, the details unsure. And I was surprised to see that the application cited 150 attendees, and again, I'm not sure what has been stated or talked about thus far, but these seem not accurate in terms of numbers, and we, Ryder Street is a private way, and private, this private way has no traffic controls, no rules, and, and gets overwhelmed very quickly by just a couple of cars, additional cars. We have found that, you know, the police are not really willing to come down to deal with traffic concerns on a private way. And so that's our daily reality, we live with a great congestion of contractor trucks and very confused delivery drivers to the Artemis who turn around, and we're really concerned that a number of the safety concerns that the ARB has conditioned the business, the future business on, have not been met. Not even, I mean, I've seen a couple people looking at a stop sign at the Artemis driveway, but that, that is hardly the conditions to put in a beer garden on an asphalt area in the middle of 243 bedrooms. It's just, I don't see the justification for it when there are other areas in town that have safety infrastructure that the police will attend to, that could be available for these Thursday nights if they're, if the idea is that they need to generate revenue. I'm happy to support local businesses trying to generate revenue, but not at the expense of public safety or potential property damage, or like the fact that it's hard to enjoy our properties, which we have a right to do when there's a party going on 80 to 200 feet from, you know, your bedroom, your kiddo's bedroom. It's just, it's a lot, and again, like, maybe this would be a different story. It's just, it's a lot. And again, like, maybe this would be a different story if the applicants had come and talked to this very small neighborhood. They know who we are. It's just, there's a lot that has gone on with this application that doesn't seem right. But the top of the list is the safety of the attendees and the safety of the residents of this private way. And there's no, there's no, there's no safety infrastructure on the street. It's a very dangerous street as is. And we are talking about adding an event that explicitly is centered around alcohol consumption. I just want that to give everyone pause.
Thank you, Mariah. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So that, and I do know, and I don't know if Mr. Feeney wants to chime in here before I come back to my colleagues and the applicants, but I do know the neighbors also referenced that the deputy town manager, Christine Bonjourno, did go down recently. I can't even remember the date, but I'm guessing it was in the past week or two. And the neighbors were extremely appreciative of her being there. She def, they said, they felt she definitely had knowledge to grasp all the different issues that were down there and asked a lot of questions of them. But unfortunately, the neighbors were stymied in the fact that they have no information around public safety, porta-potties, crowd control, and all that. So I don't, and I believe also the police chief, none of these employees at my direction. I've just heard second and third hand, and I also think, believe the police chiefs are down there. So not to put you on the spot, Mr. Feeney, but Mr. Town Manager, to put you on the spot. Is there anything, and maybe they just went down on the ordinary course of business and there's not much to report?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Deputy Town Manager Bonjourno did meet with some residents on Friday at the request of the residents, once they found out about this application, and they shared some concerns. I think as a result of that meeting, Deputy Town Manager had some questions that we would probably share with the applicant. And it, you know, it's not necessarily that they have not accounted for these things in their logistical plan. It just may not have been shown in the application to date. And that would be, you know, they demonstrate that they have restrooms, but how many restrooms to ensure that they're adequately serving the crowd that's present? You know, with obviously food and drink, you generate waste and/or trash. And we don't yet, you know, that site's not being served by a dumpster necessarily. So, okay, what is the plan for managing, handling that trash so that we don't contribute to any rodent issues or any litter in the neighborhood? I think that it was just also pointed out that a 4:30 start time in that neighborhood may contribute a bit to some of the congestion that's occurring because that is probably, you know, 4:30, 5:00 p.m. may be the time that many of Muzzioli's vehicles and other vehicles may be returning to their yard, potentially presenting a conflict with those coming to the event from the bike path. Similarly, on Thursday evenings, we actually run our own shop, swap shed at Ryder Street, and that runs from 4:30 to 6:30 as well. So those are some things that I think came out of that meeting. And I think that there was planned for a band to be set up, sort of adjacent to the property line. And again, you know, don't have the details about whether they're going to be plugging into loudspeakers and an amplifier, but just to be cognizant of how that sound may travel to the nearby abutting residences. So, you know, not necessarily anything that, you know, they're just questions to ask and to be answered to ensure that these things have been thought through. Not necessarily, if they haven't, it just wasn't information that was available in the application. And then switching to public safety, I will note, I do believe we have a representative from the police department available to answer any specific questions, and that gentleman is there via Zoom. But in speaking with the chief of police and trying to determine if this were to move forward, you know, if that was the board's decision, that, you know, what would our detail requirement be? And we thought it appropriate, given that this may be, you know, the first event or a trial run, that, you know, for the first beer garden, that we would institute a requirement that there be two APD detail officers, sort of one to manage sort of onsite operations and to ensure that, you know, the crowd was adequately controlled and that access control was happening. Folks were, you know, for lack of a better word, behaving themselves. But then also a second detail officer to be available on the outside of the property to help manage and/or mitigate parking or traffic and safety issues that may arise during the course of the event. And that would allow us to have the opportunity to provide an after-action report or feedback for the board to consider for any potential future events. So thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
I guess a question through you to Town Council. You know, if we deny the application, there's nothing to stop them from kind of reworking this if they think that they can, in coming back to us, right? Because it's not like a denying a building permit. We have to wait two years, right? So, I mean, I think.
Sorry. That's correct, Mr. Hurd. If the applicant were denied the special one-day permit or the series that they're seeking, they could come back and seek, you know, file a new application. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I never like to stand in the, you know, in the face of something that people think will help their business, but there's obviously legitimate and significant safety concerns of this application. I don't think, it sounds like the board's ready to vote this tonight. So, you know, as opposed to a motion to table, I think we would just move to deny this particular application and encourage the applicants to reach out to the town. And I think, you know, the one good thing about the process is that we now know the issues that are presented as far as this particular event. You know, for me, I think the question, the question that Mr. Diggins raised regarding what happens if you exceed 150 patrons, I mean, the answer, I don't think was sufficient for anyone. So, you know, I think it's something that, you know, the applicant, if they think, again, I'm not, I think by my tone, I'm not against the event. If they, you know, satisfy, if they go through the process of talking with neighbors and, you know, kind of satisfying the concerns of the town and of board members, and they give enough information and they want to reapply, then I think I would encourage them to do so. But I think as we sit here right now, I don't see any yes votes. So I'll move to deny the application.
Mr. Helman?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I think with the able assistance of Attorney Cunningham, to my prior remarks, I think that although I appreciated the advice, I also appreciate the complexity. And I think my support of this motion, I will second that, is not having to do with the 30 limit. I think that we would be wise to walk away from, or walk back from that a little bit, I should say. That needs to be, I think, another, a future discussion for the select board about how, if we want to agree, how we will interpret the policy. But I don't want to bring that into play tonight because I think there are sufficient site concerns, planning concerns that need a little more work. I agree with Mr. Hurd. I'm not necessarily opposed to this. And I, speaking for myself, I don't want to mix this up with the ARB application and processes. These are, I mean, I understand there's a linkage. The applicant has acknowledged some linkage. So, you know, so, but I think in terms, so it's not unfair to reference that. But the permit, the application, has nothing to do with the eventual business there. You know, we have to consider that on its own merits tonight. For me, this is enough here to say, not yet. You know, I would personally be willing to consider voting for a revised application that worked with neighborhood input and especially worked with the town manager and his team with respect to the various concerns that he mentioned. And, you know, I don't, I can't promise it, but, you know, if they want to come back to us at our next meeting for Rice Plan a couple of fewer of nights, I'd be open to that. I also do want to say too that I don't think there's anything wrong with the business being a business. It's not wrong to make money. This is a local business that started here in Arlington. They have, they employ Arlington residents who do work. They serve alcohol responsibly. They run good events. So I don't want to malign them in this. I just think that this one isn't quite ready. So I will second that motion and possibly look for a revised application.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I was actually satisfied with what the town manager said about APD sending two details because I thought that would handle, you know, any issues that might arise from the more than 150 people showing up. Or just, I mean, even if it's less than 150, if they have just problems with access and control. I mean, I have to say, I hear the proponents, applicants saying that this is a dry run. But I don't think it's a dry run for what they're going to have. I mean, they're going to have an indoor business, meaning so this wouldn't be a dry run for that, you know. And, I mean, I think, I mean, the aesthetics, it's not optimal location. But then, you know, I'm not the business, meaning so it's not for me to decide, I mean, what, how they feel about the area. I mean, I guess we will talk about the licenses later on. And I'll just put out for now, I mean, I think like the spirit of it is such, I think, that we might want to think about the competitive aspect of it. Because if it was only one company that could do a beer garden, you know, then that'd be one thing. But we have lots of others. And so I think gaming the system is kind of an anti-competitive, you know, move, whether intentional or not, you know. Now, I can put myself in the place of the neighbors and say, I really, on a summer night when I want to have the windows open perhaps, you know, would prefer not to have, I mean, this kind of event, you know, in my neighborhood. You know, but I live, I mean, very close to Trinity Church. Every once in a while, they'll have things going on, you know. And I say to myself, I like living in an urban area. I like living in a dense urban area. You know, but sometimes, I mean, you just have to say, I'm not going to get the exact atmosphere that I want. And that's a little bit of a straw man. There'll be times when I'm just going to have to deal with more noise than I would like to. And that's kind of to me, the, one of the elements, I mean, of being in a denser area, just like, I mean, have to listen to planes go overhead because we live close to Logan. And I feel good about having a 30-minute subway ride, you know, to Logan. So even though the noise is not ideal, I think it's just part of, I mean, part of living in a dense little town. So even though I understand the concerns of the neighbors about that, it's not a compelling reason for me not to do it. If Mr. Hurd not made an earthy motion as quickly as he did, I was going to suggest that maybe we let them do one and then assess, you know, and, because it might, it might not be as bad as people think, you know. And I'm seeing a head shake here that that wouldn't get support, but we have a motion here, you know. And I'll probably go along with it. We'll see, you know. That's it.
Well, you're willing, you can make any motion you want.
No, no, I think the motion's been made.
Right, it has. You can always make a second one. I don't mean to, no, my thing is, I'm thinking like Park Ave, Mass Ave, where we've been criticized, rightfully so, when somebody's gotten hurt. And they've said, you know, you haven't paid attention to areas when we highlight at the last meeting. And you don't take steps, you wait for the accident to happen. Here, we're talking about no contact with the neighborhood, talking about alcohol.
Yeah.
Okay, when you say, oh, you move into a neighborhood and all that, yeah, they did, and they have to put up with a swap shed. And Muzzioli, and Capone, and Northern Sky Lights, and all our rider trucks because we're trying. And I'm still waiting for my barrel. I want people to know. I still have not gotten my barrel. So I'm in the same boat, as well as the delivery trucks going up and down. And the Artemis that just got done over, which is a business owner's right to do. You own that land. And they had very kind things to say about, I couldn't figure out who Julia was for 20 minutes, and I realized they were talking about Julia Myrap and standing where, as you go into the Artemis, it's a one-way out. Well, guess what? Besides those cars going down 10, 15 miles an hour, which is pretty fast, it's a one-way out. Guess how many cars in 12 minutes went down the wrong way? Two. But anyway, so I understand what you're saying. I just get nervous, and I want to hear from the applicants, and I will be supporting Mr. Hurd's motion, that it's a dry run, there's no contact with the neighbors. I'm serious about the public safety issue. If I look at this area, if somebody went down on a Thursday night, they were going to the swap shed, we're telling them all, go down there anytime, no appointment needed for things like shredding and other things like that. So they're going down anyways. We're telling them on the July dates, at least one, if not both of them are ones who are saying, go down with your barrels. You know, you're going to have all those people down there. You have all the construction landscaping equipment coming down. They come down. I live on Howard Street. I live right near Ryder Street. I've been up and down since the 1997 sewage days of when all the manhole covers were flying. And the town said, there's nothing we can do. But anyways, you know, all those big trucks going down. And I don't believe there's going to be only 150 people. I don't believe if they get to 151, they're going to say, sorry, you got to go home, get back on your bike. I don't believe they're coming by bikes, so. But I'm hearing, and my thing is, there are a lot of concerns, and I don't see any kind of plans in here. The coordination I want to see with the town, the town manager and department heads. And I do want them to, you know, reach out. To me, it's a dry run that for the next two years, when they're not going to be in their inside business, they're going to try to find ways, which they should. They're a business of how they're going to make a profit. But, and there is a neighborhood there. As much as we advocate for the business, we need to also think of the neighbors too, you know, and some have been there 30 years, like the Azars and others, so. But there is a motion, and I will call in Attorney Cunningham and then ask Mr. Richter and/or Ms. Allen if they have any comments. Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just hoping that perhaps the chair could request a slight amendment to the motion that's been made as part of a motion if the board's considering that, a statement of reasons as to why a Section 14 application is being denied is required from the board. I'm happy to encapsulate the concerns in a draft that's been prepared for the board. That could be part of the motion, could present that to the board. But I do think that Mr. Helman's suggestion that the 30 license issue not be included is a good thing. But I think there are other concerns that the board has raised and discussed that could be included in the statement of reasons. I just request that be part of a motion, if that's okay. So amended.
So amended. It's fine with you. And I will say, I purposely did not put that second question on this agenda, which I had. But we don't have a full board, and Mr. DeCoursey, so don't be surprised that it's going to be on in July. So, Mr. Richter or Mr. Allen, I want to apologize. I kept saying I was going to come to you, and I haven't, but I'm there now, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to speak one last time. First of all, I just want to say that I very much appreciate the support of this board. I think the Arlington Select Board has been incredibly supportive of our small business. And up until this point, it's just been a great partnership. And I understand the concerns that were brought today, and I appreciate you being really transparent about them and giving us an opportunity to speak and address them. I regret that there's even any appearance of us trying to take advantage of loopholes or game the system. But I just wanted to address three comments that I heard during the discussion tonight. The first one being the neighborhood notification. That's definitely an error on our part. Admittedly, we did not approach the neighbors for this particular event. We have had a lot of contact with the neighbors as part of our ARB application process. And we kind of just assumed inaccurately that if we had, if we went about this particular event following the same conditions that have been put on us by the ARB special permit that was granted back in April, then everything would be hunky-dory. And obviously, that's not correct. And so we have to do a better job communicating with the neighbors. I will note that for every special permit application we have submitted so far, there's never been an area where we've had to kind of go around and notify the neighbors. So I think we'd probably just have to look at that and maybe make it part of our standard process going forward. The next point that I would like to make is with respect to attendance and our estimate. And this is specifically to address the appearance that perhaps it looks like maybe we're trying to game the system, which is not in any way true. For context, the permit application that we pulled for the reservoir concert series for this summer lists 1,500 people on the event. I think somebody said that maybe we're only putting a couple hundred people on that permit application. But we said it's 1,500 people, and it's pretty darn near 1,500 people, as best we can tell. but we said it's 1,500 people, and it's pretty darn near 1,500 people, as best we can tell. And then for context, at the Jason Russell House on Saturday, it was the first sunny Saturday in 14 weeks, and staff from the Jason Russell House actually went around and counted the crowd with a clicker, and they counted a maximum of 300 people on site at any time. So, we are pretty confident with the 150 number as being a number that is reasonable, and obviously, if things get really popular, more people might show up, but I just want to make it really clear, we're not trying to lowball things just so we can get away with an event that, you know, slides under the radar, that's not what we're trying to do at all. We take it very seriously, we take public safety, crowd safety very seriously, and so I just wanted to make that point. I think the space on Ryder Street is probably less than half of the size of the space at the Jason Russell's house, so I think that 150 people is a reasonable estimate, but I can understand how other people's estimates might vary, and I appreciate that. And then, the last part, I know that we're gonna table the comment about the permits, but again, getting back to this theme around, I regret that there's been an appearance that we've been trying to take advantage of gaining the system. By my count, we've requested nine special permits this year, and the way that I count is that if anybody from our company, myself, or Travis, or Peter, or anybody else who works for Arlington Brewing Company pulls a permit, we count that as against our 30. And then, there have been many other events that we have done with partners where they have invited us or hired us to do events, you know, things like the Town Hall, or the Milk Cafe, or the Jason Russell House with Arlington Historical Society, and it has been our understanding, because those are the hosts, and they have financial interests in those events, that they do not count against our 30, so I'm not trying to open up that discussion today, I'm just making a point, just to say, I think that, I know that we are doing our best to keep everything above board, and if we can do a better job, please let us know what we can do in order to avoid any appearance of taking advantage of the system, and we would be happy to have a conversation with anybody in the town, or the town manager's office, about what the best way is to make sure that there's kind of no questions around the number of permits that are available and granted. With that all being said, I think I'll probably just accept for the moment the imminent vote of the board, and hopefully, we can do a better job at communicating what kind of event we want to have here, and work on the logistics with the town manager to make sure that everybody is happy with it before we come back to the board and ask for permission to do something like this in the future.
Thank you so much. Mr. Allen, did you want to add anything?
That was Mr.
Oh, that was Mr. Allen, Mr. Richter, I'm sorry. Mr. Richter, did you want to add anything?
No, thank you, Madam Chair, and I echo Mr. Allen's sentiments.
I want to thank both of you for, especially me personally, because I know I get overly passionate about these things, but I do appreciate the Arlington Brewery Company, and all the events that you've co-sponsored, not only with the town, but with town organizations, and you've certainly helped highlight, you know, whether it's at the Schwab Mill, or the Jason Russell House, and I'm not gonna name them all, but I know there are people who perhaps are drawn by, oh, there's gonna be a beer garden at this Jason Russell House, or the old Schwab Mill that I kind of know about, but, you know, I guess I'll go down and check out the Arlington Brewery and see what this site is about, and has opened it up, which is another thing that I'm very grateful that you all have been able to have that partnership, and I don't want that. My remarks, you know, going right to 10 right away to be taken any other way, and I really feel confident, and you've heard the concerns of the neighbors on this particular aspect request, not that you haven't had conversations and discussions with the neighbors through the redevelopment board process, which is a separate process than the select board, but I am confident that, you know, you'll continue on now that you're in another backyard, meaning the select board, and work with the neighbors, and I won't be surprised if we'll see somewhat of a revised application after speaking with the neighbors and the town manager and his department head. So, on a motion as amended by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helms, any further questions, comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. And thank you, gentlemen, for letting, well, I took it out of order as chair, but for waiting so patiently to the end. I'm now going to go to open forum. There's no one here in the chambers, is there anyone who is raising their hand that would like to speak under open forum? And I only say that because I won't read the four-sentence thing if there's nobody else. ACMI, you want to say anything? No, I'm only kidding. So with that, open forum is closed. We'll now go to traffic rules and orders, discussion and approval surplus policy, that I know the legal department has put an awful lot of work on this, and unfortunately was told, or fortunately, whatever you want, to let us get through town meeting, and put it on an agenda where we could give it the attention to which it deserves. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to put this item onto the agenda. So, very briefly, before I turn it over to our deputy town council, this, enacting this policy seeks to memorialize existing practice. It's something that really should be in writing and available for reference for folks across town to use, so we wanted to take the opportunity this evening to document that, which we have been doing and have been putting into place during, say, you know, the building of a new high school, and removing materials and salvaging materials, and surplusing materials as a part of that project, it just seemed like a good opportunity to memorialize our practices, and I will turn it over to Deputy Town Counsel Jaclyn Munson to sort of walk through some of the specifics and the laws we're trying to comply with here.
Attorney Munson?
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board members, thanks for having me this evening. As the town manager explained, this is kind of something that is just memorializing what we're already kind of doing in practice. There's two parts to this, first is the disposal of surplus property, which you can imagine are, you know, things that have like, you know, little resale or salvage value, like, you know, a desk that maybe has been in town for a really long time that isn't holding up anymore, and, you know, the point is, is that we paid for these things and used taxpayer funds to purchase them at one point, and so we should be doing all we can to get taxpayer funding back on the back end when we are disposing of these supplies. So, we have a couple options for, I guess, disposing of these, you know, if we were to, we can swap things with other, you know, governments and instrumentalities of the government, it's the same as an intra or intergovernment agreement in that case, so, you know, in the past, in other municipal jobs, you know, I've worked with like trading, you know, like fire trucks, for example, like if we had purchased a fire truck that, you know, had kind of, you know, run its course, so to speak, and another government instrumentality maybe wanted to like, you know, use it for training purposes or something like that. So, there's a way that we can actually kind of swap things with other governments to kind of maximize the amount of supplies that we're getting for the town, and this is really just for things that are under $10,000, so it's sound business practices, that's the standard. You know, it's, I had kind of included in Section 2A, a bunch of different options, you know, we can bid things out, we can, you know, put things on, like, I think it's, the town manager might know the name of it, I think it's Munibid or Munisbid, like a municipal bidding platform, because oftentimes, you know, when we're thinking about getting rid of things, we're not thinking about actually getting money back for them, and, you know, one person's trash is another person's treasure, I guess, and so, this is really just to kind of establish consistency in a process, just to make sure that everybody is on the same page, and so that department heads are also aware that, you know, they may have some other additional options, rather than just kind of like, you know, keeping things hanging around for a while and accumulating a bunch of different supplies we don't need. So I'll just, I'll pause there before I go on to the second part, in case there's any questions.
Is, can I, the second part of it, is that where you're gonna get, you're gonna get into land?
Yep.
Okay, so then, I don't have a question on the, that's what's gonna be my question, but you're not there yet. If you could continue on, sorry.
Yeah, perfect, so, that is kind of, you know, something that like 30B requires us to do for, you know, and we want to get rid of things under $10,000 that are supplies specifically. Disposing of town-owned real property or land, if you remember from last year, I believe it was Acton Street, where that parcel was up for potential disposition, and town meeting did not vote in favor of it, but that is kind of the tangible process that's on paper here. So, this is also governed by the same statute that we have to use to purchase supplies and services for the town, as any other municipality would be obligated to comply with. We have a couple of other moving pieces, because we have a representative form of government, so this, I guess, process kind of contemplates the town manager's office working with, you know, department heads, if it is the department head that's kind of looking at this question, proposing something to the select board, and you all as select board members and as a body have the authority to add different kind of, you know, reuse or restrictions on it, meaning if you decided that you did want to dispose of certain property, maybe you wanted to put certain restrictions on the, maybe like the types of businesses, for example, if you wanted to say, well, we only want to use this property for a public purpose, right, like that kind of tells us how we need to go through the procurement process. And, you know, town meeting's involved ultimately is the legislative body that, you know, votes up or down on whether the disposition happens. So this is very similar to the first part of this, disposing of town-owned supplies, this is really just to kind of get what's already built into the law on paper, but also establishing an internal process for guidance and for people, so they kind of know how to go through this, because for municipalities that, you know, some municipalities have a lot of buildings, others have a lot of land, so sometimes, you know, there's different things that we're looking at with each particular issue, but the goal was to really just create kind of like a, in some disposal policy, so that everyone was on the same page.
Okay. I do have just two global questions.
Yeah.
In terms of needing a report to this or future select boards, and a vote from this or future select boards, am I reading this correctly, that that's really just two areas that is defined as a requirement, and that's under the land disposition language, as well as, I think there was something in there about charitable donations, that if we give something, it has to be a certified charity, and I think the select board has to, so my question is, are those the two areas, or is there another one that we need to be cognizant, aware of, that we also have?
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of like the supply end of it, you know, charitable donations and things like that, there is another layer, because obviously, you know, there's been, I mean, it's happened a lot, you know, when like governments kind of get, I guess, like, you know, frauded or defrauded out of money, that's really trying to prevent that, because again, these are taxpayer funds, you know, the select board has the authority to be able to move a disposition forward to, you know, town meeting, and so I think that there may be other areas that I'm not thinking of right now, where the select board vote may be involved, but the select board vote is required to enact this policy as a whole. That is gonna be on their signature pages, or on the last page of that document that you have, on page five, and you also have the authority to, you know, if you are going to, you know, move a disposal of real property forward, to be able to include any sort of, you know, reuse restrictions on it. So I think the board has a lot of discretion and authority to be able to help the town predict what that space or land will be used for, and I think, you know, oftentimes, when municipalities do this, they do something for a public purpose, so, you know, they want a community health center or something like that, they can charge a dollar in rent, and that kind of helps propel the public purpose aspect of it. But there's different, you know, Madam Chair, to address your question directly, there's different points where the select board is involved, but overall, the select board has the authority and is required to actually sign off on this policy.
Okay, I have two other questions, but my colleagues may ask them. Does anyone have any, my question, the last two questions I have are to Deputy Town Counsel and the Town Manager. One is, is this the document in the sense of, you have a piece of equipment, DPW, a vehicle, you have a process here outlined, how to dispose of that, but does this preclude or restrict the town manager that that's it, that's the process, or if for some reason, the town manager says, you know, we have a Zamboni from the rink, we have a Snowfighter from DPW, and we have an older electric school bus that we're getting a new one, and I found a different kind of creative swap somewhere else, will this town manager, current town managers be able to do that, or no, what's in here is how that example needs to be disposed of?
Handled.
Disposed of. Does that question make sense?
Yeah, it definitely does. So, if I'm understanding it correctly, so the threshold is $10,000, so anything under $10,000 would, that's gonna be subject to the disposal policy. If I were to guess, I think the policy reasons for that are really to, you know, make sure that we're not just like giving things away, if we're like, oh, it's only eight, you know, because sometimes, depending upon how much funding a municipality gets, that might not be enough to want, or I guess to enable people to go forward with a process like this, but, you know, the intra-government and intra, the inter and intra-government agreements are actually not subject to 30B, so it makes it a little confusing, because the policy is under 30B for things that we're disposing of for less than $10,000, but the second we start negotiating with another municipality or government agency, even the military, you know, I've worked on those before, too, where we've exchanged goods in that, in that way, that's just an agreement that actually falls outside of this policy, because it's not subject to 30B, in the same way that, you know, most inter and intra-government agreements are not subject to 30B.
Okay, and I guess my last thing would just be a comment, that when the town manager thinks it's appropriate, I think it's great that we're, that Attorney Munson and Attorney Cunningham have undertaken this, come up with a document and a policy, that we're changing from when we have surplus equipment, whatever, town school, that we're not just leaving it, paying someone to come take it away, saying to other people, it's a free-for-all, go in there and get it, when there is some value. So I guess I would leave it to the town manager, especially if, not gonna say if anymore, when we're talking about an override, I certainly think it would be appropriate to say that, you know, this is a program that the town manager and his staff are implementing to, for someone like me, and I'm not saying my colleagues aren't like this, but someone who, when we're talking override, and a dollar is five dimes and 10 nickels, this kind of means a lot, when you say, you're doing everything, you're scraping the barrel, and we say, yeah, not only that, but we have a process that we can't just give the barrel away, we're gonna see if we can get any value out of it. Does that make sense, Mr. Feeney?
It does. Thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing the value of this. Like I said, it's something we have been doing, but it's important to memorialize it for longevity and ensure we get some consistency, you know, most recently, you know, as an example, we posted for bid on Munisbid, which is like eBay for cities and towns, a particular platform, the scoreboard that had been removed from the red gym at the high school, and actually saw a bit of a bidding war between local residents who wanted to own sort of that piece of Arlington history, so it's a matter of, you know, when we do capital projects, identifying items that may have salvage value to the community, so using the high school project again, right, like the backboard and rims that were taken out of the gym still had value, first step, let's offer them to other department heads to see, can they be used in another school or town building, or should they be installed at a playground, and we found another home for them, so it's just, you know, instead of immediately turning to offer them to another municipality, or potentially just throwing everything away as a part of demolition process, we should go through, identify anything that may have value, and go through a process to try to recover that value and place those funds in the town's general fund.
You're being a little un-magnanimous, in the sense that, we never really had this policy, it wasn't until Mr. Feeney, when he was the Jack, the Jill, the Josephine of all trades, and one of the hats we, he accepted to wear was facilities, director, manager, whatever we were calling, and Adam put him in the bowels of the high school, he's the one that, when he was going through and seeing all this, that said, gee, we shouldn't just be not doing anything. So, yes, you are correct, that this is something we were doing previously, but that's because you started doing it, we didn't do it before then, so, sorry. Is there a motion to approve, oh, sorry, Mr. Hurd? Oh, sorry, Mr. Hurd.
A motion to approve. I just want to note that there is a second Zamboni at the rink that hasn't moved in 15 years. It's appropriately named the Zambulance. And we would like to see that moved because there's 35 street hockey balls behind it, I'm sure, so...
Funny thing, I've actually sold a Zamboni on Munisabid.
Did you?
Yeah, I've done it once before and I can do it again. They're very valuable for parts.
So the Zambulance has hope.
Yeah, very valuable for parts.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Helmoth? Sorry, I'm making this meeting longer than I should. Any further questions, comments? If not, on a motion to approve by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, with our thanks to our legal department. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. What you've been waiting for, the last agenda item, agenda item 19. I've asked Mr. Feeney and I had spoken with Mr. De Corsi, who, as you know, chairs the Long Range Planning Committee before this meeting. We're going to start to have updates on this. This one will be rather brief just because I think we should have a long, more detailed discussion when all five of us are here. But I also am aware of the fact that, you know, people, especially our colleagues in Town Meeting brought up about the budget, the structural deficit, a possible override. Why aren't we thinking about it? I go to sleep. We all do, thinking about it sometimes. But with that, I would ask our Town Manager, Mr. Feeney, to give us an update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and for the opportunity to put this important topic on the agenda for, you know, the beginning of what I imagine would be a series of discussions with this body. So in the reference material for this agenda item is the most recent published version of what we call the Long Range Financial Plan. This was presented to the Long Range Planning Committee on Friday, June 13th. And it provides a preliminary snapshot of where we stand. The version that is in Novus is current to reflect the appropriations that were just made at Town Meeting, our account balances as of the middle of June, and reflective of the Senate budget proposal, which has had a net positive impact since the last published plan due to some increases in funding from the House budget to the Senate budget. So in terms of the next steps, and before we sort of cut to the bottom line, I just want to provide some of the context that I provided to the Long Range Planning Committee that, you know, some of the biggest moving parts here that we need to finalize before the numbers or amounts will truly come into focus is we need to close out fiscal year '25, which ends, you know, in roughly a week. And then in the month or two that follows, when we would certify our free cash. And as you know, it's Arlington's practice to use, you know, 50% of the free cash on hand to fund the next year's budget. So the Long Range Plan that was published in the Finance Committee Report to Town Meeting had a fiscal year 2027 deficit of 13.5 million based on our preliminary estimates of our free cash position. Though it's still very preliminary and perhaps a bit conservative, we have seen that number trend down to less than 9 million. So I would expect to see that number to continue to trend in the right direction as we close the books on this fiscal year. You know, it comes with a caveat that, like, the sort of free cash boon that we've been experiencing the past few years will be largely tapering off. As we heard from the Comptroller during our third quarter budget report, we continue to see very strong returns on interest, you know, much more than we would budget. But as our ARPA monies have, you know, left the town's coffers, as the many tens of millions we had borrowed for the high school have been paid out to the contractor through requisitions and as we've wrapped up the DPW project, all those monies that we had borrowed had in our coffers and then had reinvested at a, you know, at a very favorable interest rate over the past couple of years have generated, you know, millions of dollars which have helped our free cash position because we didn't budget for their use during those years. But again, as those projects wind down and as those one-time monies from the federal government dry up, I wouldn't, you know, those are becoming non-recurring sources of revenue so we don't want to count too heavily on that same experience in the future. We do, this summer, have to look at some revenue adjustments. Namely, I would mention our ambulance revenues. We did recently increase the rates to reset them based off the Medicaid rates that were published for 2025. So that will lead to an increase in revenues there. But again, something we saw at our last meeting with the Comptroller. We're going to have to revise downward again our marijuana excise tax receipts. Perhaps even at half. It has continued to decline year over year. As I understand it, oversupply continues to like significantly depress prices in that industry. And then one other variable that we'll likely need to sort of iron out at our next Long Range Planning Committee meeting, which I believe will be on September around 12th, 13th, that area, is our student enrollment projections as shown in this plan. Right now, you would see red numbers mean planned decreases, some of them in, you know, double or triple digits. And that has the effect based on our student growth factor of sort of perhaps depressing the deficits that you see in the out-years. But this is based on older enrollment data. The school department is actively working with a consultant to provide revised numbers. We expect that process to wrap up sometime in late summer and we'll be able to revise accordingly for the fall. You know, that is something, you know, while these numbers may show, you know, a downward trend, we had expected to see really minimal growth for our FY '26 budgeting process, which was based on, you know, enrollment as of this fall. And in fact, we saw a fairly significant influx of students that wasn't necessarily part of our projection during the last override cycle. So I would say that's sort of one of those variables that we're going to have to keep an eye on. And once we have a better or more recent projection in the fall, that'll be reflected in an updated copy of the plan. And then a few things that I would share with this Board just in regards to our local economic activity is that with regard to construction activity, and this is sort of one thing that we monitor for our local economy, like fiscal year to date, when compared to fiscal year '24, we're down over 500 permits total, which amounts to, you know, sort of $450,000 less in revenue. While new house construction has ticked back up, we had 16 new one, two families constructed this past year. We're still lagging well behind fiscal year '21, fiscal year '22, fiscal year '23, where we saw upwards of 30 new builds each year. And anecdotally, we've been hearing that materials costs for construction projects locally are already increasing by, you know, 18 to 20% based on tariffs. So anecdotally, we're hearing from contractors that residents are starting to back off of some of their larger projects because of uncertainty around these tariff-related increases and, you know, potentially impacts on certain jog markets that impact Arlington residents, given what's happened with sort of a contraction of government employees at the federal level and sort of cutbacks in research in the sort of science and biotech industry that may impact some of our residents. So I say that not necessarily to paint a bleak picture, but just to point to some of the economic indicators we look at locally that sort of drive some of our local receipts. And sort of construction activity leads to new growth, which is the other way we grow our budget beyond Proposition Two and a Half. So we're also seeing a decline for fiscal year '26. In fiscal year '25, we had captured over 1.4 million in new growth. We're currently tracking towards hopefully just cresting the $1 million mark in growth. Obviously, we only budgeted $860,000. So good news, but taking a step back and putting it in the context of the larger picture, it also indicates a bit of a slowing here locally. And notably, and I don't necessarily have a great explanation for this yet, is that condo conversions, which has always been a very strong and reliable source of our new growth, those are down roughly 50% this year. So that is another thing we're keeping an eye on. And some of what will be the next few key new growth-driving projects have sort of stalled out or struggled to get underway. And we heard about one of them this evening, Tensunne Side, which is a massive project, but have seen tariff-related increases. And they now have a funding gap that they're trying to close before they can get underway. And I don't believe that the 190 Mass Ave, which is at the intersection of Mass and Lake, has gotten underway yet. And that, you know, had expected to have been probably underway or in the pipeline before now. So just point out some of those indicators that we are looking at as sort of metrics of how our economy is doing here locally. Fortunately, meals and hotels' tax receipts are remaining strong. And, you know, with that, I would say all that points to, and as, you know, as the Chair has mentioned a few times tonight, we will need an override. We will need an override in the spring of calendar year 2026. No date has been determined, and obviously that date would be set by the Board, whether that would be the annual town election or a special election in June. We don't have a recommendation for that yet. Similarly, we do not have a recommendation for what the amount will be until a few of these items come into focus. But one thing I can say with a certain degree of confidence is that I do believe it will be, that the number will be double digits in terms of the number of millions. But I don't want to, you know, say tonight what that, exactly what that number might be. And then the one other lingering question, in addition to timing of the election or the amount for the vote, will be, when will this take effect? Is it for the fiscal year '27 budget? Or is there a way that, is a community through the closeout of '25 and then the planning and closeout of fiscal year '26, which we've already budgeted for? Is there a way to effectively close that gap? Given the deficit as it is today, that is a bit of a reach, but it's something that we need to explore to see if there's any possibility of doing that. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide this update this evening and, you know, hope that the Board will entertain additional updates starting again in the fall as this progress... I don't want to call it a project, but this process progresses.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. I could go another 15 minutes, but I'm not going to. But I will say one thing, and I'm going to say how I'm phrasing it, which is probably not the right way. But a few people have started to ask me, "How come we didn't do this override like we've done with others?" Which is, we've always stretched it out one more year. And what I've said to them is, "We have done that." This Town Manager unfortunately...
That's because we screwed up last time.
...inherited a screw-up by the pre, my personal opinion, no one else's. But what I'm saying is fact. The way I'm saying it is my personal characterization. Mr. Fuller totally screwed up the last override, where we could have fixed it, but then it would have been taking it directly out of taxpayers' pockets and not honoring what was presented to us and what we voted on. So our current Town Manager, when he came in, he also had to do the same process and did it successfully, which is dragging another year out of the override. Unfortunately, he did it on the front end and not the back end. So that's just my little thing to add to that. So thank you, Mr. Feeney. And after the September 12th meeting, I know this will be an agenda item. So any comments or questions? If not, new business, Ms. Mar?
No new business, thank you.
Attorney Cunningham?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
And you're going to get us the wording on that vote. Chapter 138, Section 14, whatever you said. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, I just wanted to note that we have experienced a delay in the delivery of our new trash carts. We are working with the manufacturer to try to expedite additional production and receive deliveries from another facility. And we're trying to fine-tune what our delivery schedule will be. So more information on that to come. And we're going to start providing more regular updates and invite folks to check the website to see sort of where we stand. The one thing I would add to that is we received successive deliveries of only trash carts when they were supposed to be coming in, both trash and recycling, so that our delivery would be more efficient and we could drop one of each type at every household. But with that, we didn't want to necessarily sit on the carts while we have the delivery crews. So as of today, there are a number of deliveries going out that are solely trash carts. And we will be making a return visit once we do have the recycling carts available. I just wanted to say that here this evening to let folks know we didn't get your order wrong or anything like that. It was just a matter of, here's what the manufacturer provided and delivered to Arlington, and we're delivering them to our households. But we are tracking very closely exactly what household is, which has received what cart. So that was not necessarily done in mistake or by error. It was simply the product that we have, and we wanted to continue getting the carts out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can attest personally, the Ryder Trucks, big ones, were down there this morning. I mean, the, oh yeah, there were Ryder Trucks on Ryder Street. So I can personally attest to that. And I want everyone to know, I am Thursday pickup. I live on Howard Street near the Otten. I do not have my trash or recycling. So I understand. Was that it, Mr. Feeney?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Can I be...
Mr. Hurd?
Two things. Both parking spaces, both located near a baseball field because that's where I hang out. One thing to just look at, down at the Scannel Field, which the parking area is what we, back in our, in the, in our teenage days, we called the Donut. There's a handicap parking space, but it's not painted. And because it's a circle, it's sort of confusing.
Where is this? I thought...
It's Scannel Field, like down on Wood Street.
Okay.
Where, you know, I think when you go, not so much if you're using it as a handicap individual, where you park in there, you're not kind of, it doesn't designate where you're not supposed to be parking. It's a little confusing. So I think that's just something to look at because I think it should be painted. Then one more thing to look at, on Summer Street at the corner of Summer and, God, now I can't... Forest, there, right where like Auntie Cafe is and Sonos. I've talked about this before. I don't think that stoplight, I don't think the walk light turns or turns quickly enough. I think it's a very old, it's like the ones with like the big metal buttons that were there when I was young. You know, and a lot of kids go back and forth from the field to A-Cafe and back and, you know, all day. And usually, when my kids are there, I just stand in the middle of the street. I'm like, "Go." So it's something to look at. And then there's a parking space, which I think is an illegal parking space anyways. It just needs signage. There's the crosswalk. Then there's some legal parking spaces. But then there's a little, you know, like a 12-foot area from the crosswalk to the area, the driveway to the back of Sonos where cars park. And I guess just, even though I look at it and like I can't believe anyone would park there, you know, without signage, people will do it. So it might be just something to look into to put a "No Parking Here" corner sign there. Because I, again, I think it's already an illegal parking spot. It would just, we need to sign it. Because adding to the issue with the crosswalk and the light is, you know, a big pickup truck sitting there blocking the way. So those are my two things.
Mr. Helmoth?
No new business.
Thank you for the trash update. I did speak to the Manager about, yes, the town owns the trash and recycling barrels. No, the Town Manager advises not to label them or anything because they all have individual serial numbers that the truck will be able to read and scan. Yes, there is a differing view from the recycling side, who say you can paint on the inside of the lid, label it, or whatever. The Town Manager would tell me otherwise. So my last question on this, because it'll save you a phone call from me tomorrow, is people have been asking me, especially around parks and playgrounds, I'm assuming you're going to say, "No, don't put any locks on any of these barrels." But what they're saying is, "Is there any way we can lock and secure our barrels?" So that, knowing that if your barrel's locked and the truck comes by in the automatic arm, then your trash isn't going to come out. But they're saying, you know, putting that aside, that they've had times where there's two, three, four, eight, 10, 14 green bags of dog poop, and their trash hasn't been taken away. So am I correct that if I ask you, can residents put locks on their barrels? So am I correct that if I ask you, can residents put locks on their barrels, you're probably going to say no? Or you would advise against it?
To that, Madam Chair, I would say no, for exactly the reason you outlined. When that barrel gets lifted, the lid needs to be able to swing freely to allow the waste out, and presumably it's at curbside for collection. So, you know, we would not be able to secure the lids in any manner once it's out for collection.
Okay. So I'm not going to say, "If you put a lock on, make sure you take it off before the trash truck comes," so...
That being said, it's probably hard to enforce, if we go around looking for barrels with locks on them.
And a motion to adjourn by Mr. Helmoth, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor, say aye. Are those opposed? Unanimous vote? Thank you.